Pamela Reed, 200 South Main Street. I'm here tonight to present a new Mount Airy Junior Task Force. A couple of the kids actually came up with this idea. They wanted to start their own Mount Airy Commission. This is our version of it. The kids will basically learn leadership, communication, and social skills. They'll meet monthly like a commission does. They will hold elections, volunteer in the community, attend your commission meetings to bring content back to their meeting for discussion. We will educate them on local government. It'll be kind of a collective effort with all the parents. And we are actually here tonight to gain support from you because on occasion we will reach out to you to be guest speakers at their meeting to educate them on what you do, what your roles are in town, what the mayor's role is, that sort of thing. So these are the guys. They will also actually complete a MML shadowing program, which is a state of Maryland program. Mayor Pat helped me kind of find that program for them. And they will basically shadow you.
That's great.
So they can shadow somebody else.
So Mayor Pat behaves. A big part of it is finding volunteer opportunities in the community. I can use them near pores at Oktoberfest.
They can put the wrist straps on.
Right, we can get a wristband.
They can put on the wristbands.
So hopefully this is something where I personally would like to see it go is a charter actually be added to the town of Mount Airy to make it an official commission. But we're going to start out as a task force to see how the kids do and keep them engaged, that sort of thing.
Sounds great Pam, thanks.
Pam, for some of the older kids that are in middle school, will this count towards service hours as well?
It would, actually.
Awesome.
Yep, so the meetings would count as service hours, obviously, when they volunteer in the community, the time they spend with you shadowing. It's all volunteer service hours.
Fantastic.
So, okay, so there, oh, it's K through eight.
Yeah, so as it grows, we have eight kids right now. There is an age gap, so we'll look at kind of separating the groups, you know, the older kids with the younger kids. But it's an opportunity for them to learn about local government, get engaged, become active. Maybe one of them is our future mayor, who knows?
That's awesome.
As long as it's not any time within the next couple of years.
So just a couple items, and they can also bring back feedback from other youths, their peers, from the community, and so we can hear what's happening with our youth out in the community.
Exactly.
Which is very exciting.
To learn how to initiate legislation.
There you go. So now, you brought up two things, the task force, we'll go ahead, I'll go ahead and start, but we wanted to support a town council because this is going to be very interactive with the town council.
Right.
So we'll start that. Should you want a full-blown commission, that will be an actual town council action with a town council vote for the charter amendment.
Yeah.
So this is just a preliminary step to see how everything works out.
See how it works out.
I think we ought to give Pam a big round of applause, and the kids.
It's all that. So with that said, it's not limited to just the kids that are up here. Anyone that wants to volunteer and be a part of it, we encourage it. You know, as many seats are in here are what we can have, so.
That's wonderful. Thanks for taking that.
Thanks Pam.
Ready?
Go that way. That's all the excitement there is, kids, that's it. Then you go home and you're alone. No, your parents are there, hopefully.
Sorry. All right, up next, I see Steve McKay in the back, representative on the Frederick County side. Steve, you want to say anything?
No, I'm just here to listen.
Okay.
Well, hey, we greatly appreciate you being here. You know, when you come, we'll always give you an opportunity to say, address us if you want. Thanks, we appreciate it, we do, very much, very much. Approval of council meetings minutes. We've got the closed meeting minutes from January and the, I guess then we got the open meeting minutes, too.
Peter, I'll make the motion to approve.
All right, do I have a second? Second from Jason, any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that was that worded correctly on the, which, the issue I emailed you on earlier. We've got too many papers this month.
Yeah, we got, yeah, this was a big packet.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do remember there being a change.
Yeah, it talked about introducing the legislation for the provisionary ballot. Is that worded correctly in the minutes? Because the minutes implied that it was going to be introduced this month, but I think we're voting on it.
Oh, no, it says, what it says, it says, if not adopted, we need to reintroduce it. That's because our time, we introduced it in December. So if we don't pass it this time, we would have to reintroduce it if we move it to next month.
Reintroduce next month?
So, yeah, so that's the key, because we'd be getting beyond our 75 days. Yeah, we'd get them beyond our 75 days. But we're within our 75 days, so we're still on schedule to deal with it tonight.
Okay.
So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous? Chief, Manory Police Report.
Good evening, everybody. Chief Reed is with the Manory Police Department. Start with, over the course of the month, the Manory Police Department staff attended 10 meetings and trainings during the month of January, which included the annual reporting procedures for Maryland Police Training and Standards Community, Commission on Community Policing at the Hagerstown Barrack. We also attended the Maryland Chiefs of Police, the Maryland Sheriff's Association, the Maryland Correctional Administrators Association Legislative Reception at the Miller Center Office Building in Annapolis. And Lieutenant Snyder attended expungement training at the Carroll County Sheriff's Office. As far as patrol vehicles, right now, we have one vehicle that is out of service, been out of service since January 18th due to a departmental collision. In that collision, there's no injuries. The patrol vehicle is undergoing repairs at this time. Community outreach, there was two things I want to address. One is, I also sent everybody a copy of the police department's Community Policing Program Annual Report, which is required by the Maryland Police Training and Standards Commission. I believe everybody has a copy of that. It's also a copy on the back table for everybody else who would like to read that. It's a 13-page document, it's got a lot of information about what the police department's doing out in the community and our views on community policing. Secondly, we are continuing to monitor the situation over on Backacre Circle. We've been working a selective enforcement detail in that area to contend with neighborhood traffic complaints, and we began January 17th so far through January 31st. We've logged approximately 14.25 hours in enforcement activities at that location. We've issued a total of 19 warnings and one safety equipment repair order. Our priority is on educating the public due to the recent addition of a no U-turn sign that was placed under town authority in the interest of public safety. And as you're aware, the town has also been working with the business to help remedy the traffic complaints, and the business has also been working with the patrons to keep them informed of the issues. So basically, a big breakdown of the enforcement activities. We've issued 11 warnings for failing to obey a traffic control device, which is the no U-turn sign. We've had three traffic stops, three warnings were issued for failing to obey a stop sign, one warning for failing to drive right of center. I believe there's two warnings for negligent driving, one for driving without headlamps when required, and one for one other violation, and again, one safety equipment repair order. And again, we will continue to monitor the progress over there. One thing I'd like to point out is if anybody in town is having any concerns regarding traffic, please use the appropriate venue to make a report to the police department and to the authorities. Look at Facebook. Well, Facebook and Twitter are great, they're great social media platforms, but the message may not reach where it needs to go. So we need to hear firsthand in order to help. The police department has a traffic supervisor that works with residents to address the concerns through education and enforcement. The MAPD Traffic Supervisor is PFC James Brooks. He can be reached at 301-703-1375 or by email, and his email address is jbrooks@mountairymd.gov. So if anybody has complaints, they want to reach out to us, that's how you get in touch with us. Go over the monthly performance statistics for the department. The month of January, we handled 966 calls. We issued, in the traffic area, we issued 62 citations, 145 warnings, 23 safety equipment repair orders, we made two DUI arrests, we had five traffic arrests with a total of 150 traffic stops. As far as criminal enforcement investigative actions, we had two Part I crimes reported, and we had 11 Part II crimes reported. We made seven criminal arrests, issued two civil citations, and took 57 investigative reports. Some of the significant issues around town that we saw this month, we had two serious accidents, one on the 1300 block of South Main Street, which was a head-on collision, and then we had a second crash on South Main Street at Ridge Road, which is around 27. And both these crashes occurred in the middle of the day, and both of them involved drivers that were either under the influence of alcohol or under the influence of some type of narcotics. So there was two arrests, one, one is pending, so. I'll just kind of point that out. This is a crime that doesn't just occur at nighttime or anything like that. It occurs in the middle of the day, too, so we can be aware and use caution out there. We did have two arrests for domestic-related assaults in two separate cases as well. As far as the monthly overdose summary, we had two overdoses in town limits this month, and both were heroin or opioid-related, and both, in both cases, naloxone was administered by EMS. So that's our report. Anybody have any questions?
Just a comment on the traffic reporting on Backacre Circle. You listed a list of violations, not all of those, probably most of the U-turns were probably related.
I'd say it's, right.
But a lot of those because a friend of mine that lives there was getting a ticket for running a stop sign as he was talking to me on the phone.
Right, yeah, we're finding it's about half and half. A little bit more this month was, I think it was 11.
It's just to point a clarif, there's an issue over there. There's problems, all those traffic violations.
Well, when we get calls to go, I want to remind everybody, when we get calls to go into an area like that, we're not just looking to enforce the traffic sign, we're enforcing all the traffic.
Enforcing everything.
The traffic article. So, we're not just there for one particular issue, so.
No, I sat out there, I noticed people driving too fast.
All right.
And they weren't all the Dan's patrons, so.
Now, the other thing I wanted to ask you, though, is I'm getting a lot of communication from residents that live there that they've had a lot of close calls. When you've been surveilling that area, have you seen any close calls, or?
My guys have not reported anything out of, other than the U-turns themselves. Again, there was 11, you know, of course, we're not there 24 hours a day, seven days a week to see everything that goes on. We're only there for a certain amount of time, and we might get calls that pull us away, and we have to go and come back and kind of, you know, hit it, you know, hit that area like that, like anywhere else. But they've never, they haven't expressed anything that they've witnessed any close near misses or any accidents or anything, so.
I do find out.
Not to say that it's not happening.
To answer Patty's question, I parked out there for a couple nights because I actually wanted to feel it myself. You can't do that to sit there yourself. And a lot of times, cars just right on the rear end of other cars pulling over, and they really need to slow down, give it some space, take a few extra minutes to get home as well. I think there's a problem over there, and I don't think it's going to be solved by traffic means. I think we have to find another remedy. That being said, everybody in that area drives a little crazy trying to get home as well, so it's.
If you want to talk to Streets and Roads about, you know, some speed control devices, some speed hump cars.
We have many. Traffic calming devices, speed humps.
And there's going to be more coming. We did a traffic study in Streets and Roads, it's going to look at that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
All right, up next, Manory Volunteer Fire Company report. Bruce, welcome. Put on your fire hat.
For the month of January, rescue calls, we had 97 in Carroll, 39 in Frederick, three in Howard, two in Montgomery, for a total of 141. Fire calls, we had 11 in Carroll, nine in Frederick, two in Howard, for a total of 22, which resulted in 108 calls for service in Carroll, 48 in Frederick, five in Howard, and two in Montgomery for 163 incidences. I didn't have the numbers in January, but I have last year's totals. EMS rescue calls were 1,991, fire calls were 331, which resulted in 2,322 calls for service last year by the fire department. If you check our website, you might be aware that we have new rescue equipment. We replaced what people commonly call the Jaws of Life hydraulic rescue tools. The ones we had were very old, and they weren't working on new modern cars. So we put a new set in place, that was a $62,000 investment. But one set is actually battery-powered, because most tools now are battery-powered, so we have that and another set that runs off a pump on the unit. So we're very pleased to have that capability on our rescue unit and bring that up to date. And so, being we had to put out the 62K, we want you all to come on the 17th for country breakfast. And you get some food, and you can help out the fire company. Thank you.
Bruce, when is the fire company's dinner this year? I haven't seen.
We're not having it.
Oh.
I mentioned it at the last meeting, we're not having the dinner, the turkey, oyster, ham dinners anymore.
No, I mean, the one, you know, for the.
Oh, the banquet.
Yeah, the banquet, yes.
Oh, the banquet is the ninth, whatever, I think that's the Saturday.
Of March. Okay, because I know it's always in there, I hadn't heard anything, so.
Yeah, no, the invitations went out this week, so they should.
Probably have it today or tomorrow.
It's in the mail.
That's, that's it. I want to get it on my calendar. Thanks. All right, up next, we have citizen concerns, community comments. I'm assuming that a fair portion of the audience is here to speak on Dorsey Town. I could be wrong, but let me see. If you're here to talk on the Dorsey Town topic, maybe can I see a show of hands?
Peter asked about Wawa.
Okay, well, that's not on our agenda.
Exactly.
Okay, no, I'm just trying to sort out the Dorsey Town. Okay, what I want to do is take the Dorsey Town people as a group last, because immediately after citizen comments, we will be discussing the Dorsey Town topic. So my thought is, hearing from all the citizens and then going right into the topic would make sense. So for the beginning of citizen comments, let's take everything other than Dorsey Town. So anybody who wants to speak in the citizen comments section, if you, other than on the Dorsey Town topic, if you want to kind of line up over here so we can get an idea of how many people we are and how much time we have. Anybody want to address council on any other issues? All right, well, let's roll right in. Frank, you got something? Okay, come on, Frank.
Frank Dursfall, I'm here.
Frank, you know you got to be at the mic, come on. You've got, you've got to be at the mic.
Yes. All right. Frank Dursfall, I'm a member of the EDC, and also owner of a property on Backacre Circle. There are probably several members of the business community on Backacre Circle here this evening, and I would like to give them a chance to speak first, really, before I follow up with a bit of a summary. So if any of those would like to come up with any comments, then I'll step back and wait until that's done.
Anybody here to, anybody here to address Backacre? Get on up there, Mike. Come on, that's why you, that's citizen concerns, what were you doing? You know this. You were raised on this. His mom was our town clerk, so he knows the process.
I'm Mike Dixon, I own a, also own a business on Backacre Circle, and I know that there's, I hear through the grapevine that there's been issues with speeding, parking, people opening their doors and letting their kids out, and dangerous situations. And I also hear through the grapevine that there might be a situation where parking would be closed on Backacre Circle, for whatever reason. I don't think that's a very good idea, because when I bought property at that location, it was told to me that there was park, going to be parking allowed on both sides of the street. Then about a year or two later, they came in and they closed parking on one side of the street and allowed parking just during the day, not overnight, on the other side of the street, which I thought, I mean, that's a reasonable idea, because we had campers being parked there, we had buses being parked there, we had dump trucks being parked there overnight, and none of that stuff is a good idea, nor was any of it designed for heavy equipment to be parked there overnight. So I thought, you know, that's a taming, probably a taming device of the town to keep that under wraps. But we have, we have situations on Backacre, and this situation is not just Backacre, this is all over Mount Airy. Mount Airy has parking issues everywhere. But I'm here to speak on Backacre. We have sporting events at the fields that are across from my building at 1902. Those sporting events can bring a lot of people at one time, and they park, not only do they park in the designated parking lot for the soccer fields, they park on both sides of the street in front of my building during those events. They also park in my parking lot. Not that this is anybody's concern here, but I've picked up dirty baby diapers, Coke cans, candy wrappers, and everything. They walk through my bushes, all kinds of stuff. But you know what? In the good of the town and the good of keeping in good neighborship and allowing the parents to have a place to take their kids, I pick it up, I redo the bushes, I do what needs to be done to be a good neighbor. So I think, as far as the parking issue on Backacre is concerned, I think we all need to remember one thing. We need to, first of all, we need to slow down, and we need to be cognizant of our neighbors. Our neighbors are everybody that lives there, our neighbors are all the businesses that are there, our neighbor is the dance studio that's trying to drop their little girls off to go and into dance, and they don't necessarily park there forever, they pull up, they drop the girl off, they pull away, sometimes they make a U-turn, okay? We got no U-turn signs now, that's great. We're going to be enforcing that, I assume. We need to, we need to all work together to come up with a decent solution on Backacre besides shutting down parking on both sides of the street. I just do not, I'm here to say, I don't think it's a good idea.
Mike, we usually don't respond, but I'm going to make an exception. And first of all, thank you.
You want me to sit down before you respond?
No, no, I appreciate, Mike installed our electric car station gratis at the municipal lot. We really appreciate you, we appreciate your business. So when I say this, I don't mean to be offensive, but as part of your site plan, they told you you could use the street to park when you went to planning?
No, no.
Yeah, they did.
No, they didn't. When I, when I bought the lot from Doc, it was told to me that that street was designed, and it was designed for parking on both sides of the street. That was told to me, that wasn't put in writing, but, but having said that, I live on Paradise Avenue, and there's parking on both sides of the street there.
Okay, I just want to bring up a point, just want to bring up a point.
Which is crazy.
Which is crazy.
Okay, can we get back?
But it happens, and we're all neighborly.
Back on topic to Backacre. Yeah, that is a difference, but as part of site plans, and that's what it really is, when kids, when you have soccer games there, parking's allowed on that street. That is not a new parking street. We will shut it down on one side because of a safety issue, but parking is allowed on Backacre. Business parking is not allowed. It's part of any site plan, and where it gets a little dicey and industrial is its flex space. So when you change usages, it gets a little squirrely for the town, but one constant remains, businesses are not allowed to use the street as their parking lot. That's what we're struggling against, and I do see Health Unlimited here this evening. That's an example where we always try to work with the business, and we have.
Sure.
But if it comes to the safety of those children and the safety of our residents, then there's going to come a time where we need to stop. But we've been, Barney's been out there, he's actually went over and actually did more than he's supposed to do. He's acted as a liaison to try to talk to joining business owners to try to help. We've actually not enforced what we could have enforced on day one. So we are working with them, and I appreciate what you said, and you made good points, and we're going to try to work with them.
Sure.
But at the end of the day, we got to think about the residents that live there, too. And you're right, people there got to slow down.
Yeah.
Because I can tell you, it's people rushing to get home, they're right on people's rear ends, and I talk about near collisions, I watched it a lot. And they need to get these, Bob, who was sitting down there, got, almost ran down by a resident trying to get home, they need to back down, too. But that being said, everybody's got to work together, but at the end of the day, we don't allow parking for businesses on.
And I totally, I totally agree with that.
Yeah, I know you.
But, but in an overflow situation where it's a one-z, two-z type thing, you know, like God or School, I think, is here, aren't they? Yep. They have, they have their family night, or their parents' meet night, and they, they, I mean, come on, they have to have a little more than what's normal. The dance studio, what's the name of the dance studio? They have to have a little more than normal.
But that's, that's every night.
Yeah.
You do realize that.
Yeah.
It's not a special event, it's every night.
I understand.
Okay.
I'm just here.
Just making some clarification. I love hearing you talk.
Safety is safety.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. By the way, we are talking with Tesla, just want to let you know that.
I'm good.
I know, I know.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else on Backacre?
Hi, I'm Lauren Belsky, I'm the owner of Center Stage. You know, just to kind of reiterate the same things, I just wanted to bring to attention, I think it's not as much of a parking issue anymore. I think limiting the parking on one side of the street has really helped a lot with that, because I have been out there a lot checking it out, too, to see what's going on. But I think it's more so a traffic issue, like you had said, I think it's the U-turn signs. I do think that if we could look at the no U-turn sign and see about adding a second one, I did speak to an officer on Thursday, and he had said that most people can't see it at night. So if they're not there during the day to know that the no U-turn sign's there, and if they're not reading my communications to our patrons about no U-turn signs, then they have no idea.
They actually have two, maybe three already.
Is there another one? I think he was recommending putting one a little bit before where our entrance was, so that was easier to see there. But I think it's mostly, to me, from what I've seen, because I have been out there a lot, the parking's not such an issue, I mean, anymore. It seems that there's three or four cars maybe parked, and typically, they're safe when I've seen them. It's more so the U-turns happening in front of, you know, vehicles that are moving and things, and of course, that's, you know, a danger that we're concerned about. So I think just continuing to enforce that, that people realize that more will help.
One of the U-turns, I caught two. One was a gentleman that didn't go to your dance studio.
Yeah, I think another part of the problem is, too, there are a lot of, like you had said before, a lot of speeding vehicles that are really close up behind other vehicles making U-turns. So I think that's, you know, causing issues as well. And we have, just, just so you know, we've received some harassing calls to the studio from neighbors now, and laying on the horn and speeding by us and things like that.
That's unfortunate.
And we are really trying to work, work with everything.
You are, we appreciate, we have, we have some other ideas on the rise, and Barney's come up with some ideas, so there's some things to talk about. I know Patty's been getting a lot of calls herself, so.
Yeah, I just, I think. Yeah, no, and I think, you know, the parking, again, like I said, I know a lot more of our patrons have told me that they're parking in the lot instead of on the street now, so there's a lot less on the road, and I don't think the three or four cars that are parking on the road are really the issue anymore, so.
Yeah, there was four when I was there. There were eight spaces open in the lot, though, I got to tell you that.
And I do think a lot of them are quicker, you know, drop-off kind of things and stuff, too, so.
It's convenience, I see the Health Unlimited, I see open spots, sorry, Dan, but people park there for convenience.
Yeah.
It's not always overflowing. I think when they advance, it is, but sometimes it's just convenience, which is odd for a workout place or a dance studio, even.
And they don't want to walk that extra few feet.
I don't know, but we appreciate everything you're doing to help work, and I hope you can see that we are, as a town, are trying to work with you as well.
Yeah, no, and I just wanted to kind of express that, you know, we would prefer, obviously, to continue that on-street parking, just for convenience, but maintain safety with driving.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that perfect? Thank you.
I want to, how many people want to speak on this topic?
Okay, just two of you left? Okay. Just because we only allot 15 minutes for this, so.
I'll be quick.
Thanks.
I'm Gina Del Gandia, I'm the owner of the Goddard School on Backacre Circle.
Welcome.
Thanks.
I think you've been here before, though, I think I've, okay.
Yeah, lots of times.
Yeah.
Um, I just, I also want to reiterate and express, I don't, we try, we get a lot of complaints from residents in the neighborhood claiming that all of our parents speed, they completely disregard the children in the neighborhood. We do have parents that speed. I send regular communications to them to remind them what the speed limit is, bus laws, everything else. I regularly get tailed, honked at, whatever it is, driving, tailed by a resident of the neighborhood. So I think that safety is critical and crucial. I don't know if we've looked into some type of speed calming devices. I would, it's annoying, but I would totally support that on the road. I do also want to say, I understand that there's a difference between business parking on the street and residential parking on the street, but I also will highlight, I think there's a safety concern as it relates to children being dropped off at buses by cars being parked on the street. So it's kind of a similar thing. Sorry, I'm like totally out of breath.
It happens to me at the microphone, too. Don't feel bad. Don't feel bad.
So we see these parents dropping their kids off at the dance studio, and I see the same thing every day, twice a day at the bus stop. So there's cars parked along the one side of the street, and yes, it's short-term, but it's no different. It's cars opening and closing, and they're the same people that are complaining about this, and I really do think a lot of it is a speed issue and a frustration, like, oh, there's more businesses coming, and this is annoying, and what are we doing? So I think, too, we need to consider that as well, where is that a safety thing for them?
One of the things that's going to help, and again, it's the town being proactive and trying to help, it's something that's really, it's not, it's not something for us to fix. Barney has talked to the developer, the overall developer, and he's trying to get Backacre Circle to get pushed through ahead of schedule. That will help somewhat. I don't know if it'll solve, but we're trying to do everything we can, definitely help you down at the end.
Sure.
And Mike's building down at the end, so. We're trying to push Backacre through before it's ready.
So, and again, I mean, we're, I know that all the businesses are very supportive of reminding our customers, we can't force them to do anything, but reminding them about safety and speed and everything else. I mean, as Mike said, yeah, we have an occasional event that calls most of the parents at the same time that might result in overflow, but, you know, that's not my main concern, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you, appreciate it. And we have one more.
Hi, I'm Rob Floyd with Skyview Gymnastics. We're also on Backacre Circle, although we're at the end, sort of away from the townhouses. I'm very much in favor of allowing parking on at least one side of the street over where we are. We are busy in the evenings and Saturday morning, not typical business hours. Our weekday daytime activities are pretty well accommodated with our own parking lot, but in the evenings, during the times when classes are changing, one class is ending and children are being picked up, and the next class is starting and children are being dropped off, there's a lot of congestion there. It would, I think, be of great benefit to our customers if some street parking was allowed there. Right now, both sides of our part of Backacre Circle are restricted.
Both sides of that area?
Both sides, yes.
Sure about that? I guess you are, because I used to do a running club over there, and there's cars parked on both sides. One was mine.
Well, right now, past the medical building, going downhill, both sides have no parking signs. Now, maybe that was a mistake, but where we are right now, both sides of the street have no parking signs.
What street is that, again?
Backacre Circle.
He's on the other side.
I'm at 2603.
Are they beyond what we have?
Yeah, if you come up Aaron, you make a right to go down to his place.
Correct.
And you're not in the path of people coming home from, or going to and from work, so. You're not an issue, and we do try to work with people where we can, and as we've worked with Health Unlimited.
Do we have that portion of the road yet?
I don't know if it's been dedicated. It's actually rough.
I think right up, right just past our building is.
It wasn't finished paved.
Right. I'm not sure that, I'm not sure we control that section yet.
Well, I, when I came to talk to the clerk of the town, I was told that those are City of Mount Airy, no parking signs.
We can, we can definitely take one.
And I believe that the street is finished up just past the entrance to ours.
Okay.
But yeah, but right now, we have restricted parking on both sides of Backacre Circle, and I'm not sure why, because you're right, we don't interfere with any residential parking.
You're not in a triplane at all, no.
And we do have, we do regularly have tractor-trailer trucks parked.
You're not on the radar right now.
That can be good.
I appreciate your concern and taking a look at that, so.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Frank, did you want to sum up?
This Monday, he's going to talk about it.
Yeah, you got, you got.
He keeps talking about it.
Well, you're the one that's been allowed to do it, so.
But nothing you've heard from any of these comments, in any of the articles or anything people talk about are parking problems, they're driving problems. No one's, no one's having issues parking, they're having issues driving. So what you're going to do is you're going to take away that people are doing things correctly, parking, and allow these people who are driving poorly just to continue driving poorly. So I think taking the parking away is not going to solve anything out there.
Well, that's why something like speed devices, such as speed humps or something, may solve the problem, because it'll just slow the traffic, it won't affect whether you're parking or not.
No, it's actually a combination. When you park, you get out of your car, you open your door, it's a combination.
It's not a problem if the people aren't speeding.
It's not a problem if they pull over and don't get out of their car and don't move. You're right, but no, the two go together, I'm sorry.
All right.
I'm glad it's working out for you over there, Dan. Your road's a little bit wider.
It is.
For now.
Well, basically, to summarize really what I think is being overlooked in this whole scenario here, first off is, you know, we have enforceable laws and codes in this town that address safety as humanly, best as humanly possible. And every street where any vehicle can drive on is going to have a safety concern or should, and, you know, that is generally going to be addressed in this town. What we don't have is we don't have a road utilization standard, okay? We've talked about Backacre Circle, no parking, parking signs, everything is done arbitrarily, you know, at the whim of somebody's discretion, okay, as to how things are done with parking on the streets in this town, and in particular, Backacre Circle. You know, planning and zoning has road width standards, and Backacres was designed by an engineer, and it was built and paid for by a developer to a standard, a national standard, and that standard, including parking on both sides of that street, when it was designed. It wasn't designed to be 36 feet wide just because somebody felt good about it, and it was bought and paid for as a street that should be capable of supporting parking on both sides to a national standard with driving lanes that meet those standards as well. So the, so, you know, what has not happened in our code, or in planning and zoning, is that nobody is utilizing a standard that is going to be used whenever these streets are purposed for and utilized in this town. You know, take Main Street, right out here in front of this building, okay? That street is nowhere close to the same standards as Backacre Circle, and yet there hasn't been one person that I've heard complain about safety on that street. So, you know, that, and parking, like Mike said, parking on Paradise, you know, it's allowed, and that street isn't anywhere close to being Backacre Circle width, which is 36 feet. So I think, I think it's the town council's responsibility to address a uniform standard of utilization, I'm calling it this, I've come up with this name, for these streets in this town so that we don't have these issues. You know, and there are standards that most streets in this town should be able to conform to, and if they do, then parking should be allowed if that's part of it, and then safety is what it's always been. We still have to deal with that no matter what. So I'd like to see the town council make an effort here to get this a standard so that the mayor isn't on his own, or a politically elected person comes along and says, well, today I'm putting stop signs on this side of the street and that side of the street. You know, I don't think that's an acceptable way to deal with the taxpayers' money and the utilization of these expensive streets that were built. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
Frank, just to clarify, we do have standards.
I haven't seen it.
If you would, Barney, if you would visit him, he'll show you the standards for when we go through a planning process. Residential parking, you're allowed to park on the street unless we find it's an issue such as lookout, where fire trucks couldn't get by. Then we deemed it, one side of it, no parking. When we deem one side of a street no parking, that becomes a council action. When you talk about enforcement, it's a mayor's action. We have total standards. Whenever we build out a community, you're allowed off-street parking for residences. You're talking about a business standard, very clear.
No, I'm talking about a public street utilization.
I don't want to get into debate, but if you want to check the code, we'll show you the standards.
Okay, well, I don't see, okay.
What we try to do is make exceptions where we can, and we've done that repeatedly. We've made exceptions. When the exceptions don't work, they don't work, but to say there's no standards is not true. There's standards.
Then where are the standards utilized on Main Street out here?
Would that parking, Main Street was here before we even had standards to parking out here. So Main Street's a horrible example. By the way, we get complaints all the time on Main Street about parking, all the time.
But I, we're not dealing with this as we should as a body.
Thanks, Frank.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move into the Dorsey Town. How many people wanted to speak about Dorsey Town? Anybody wants to talk about Dorsey Town? Why don't you line up on the wall over here, and we'll take you one at a time. If you don't stand up on the wall, I'm going to assume nobody's here to talk to us about Dorsey Town. I don't see anybody moving over there. Ah, here we go. Okay. Is there anybody else who wants to speak on the Dorsey Town topic? Okay, we got two.
Yeah, there's, there's.
Okay. Because I thought I saw a lot more hands.
They'll get braver as the speaker.
I saw, I thought more, I saw, I thought more hands than just this three.
Oh, little by little.
Yeah.
Don't make them all stand. It'll be good.
If you have something to say about Dorsey Town, please get up and educate us, because we're, it's a changing, it's a changing resolution, and, you know, we really want to know what, how you feel.
Yeah, we, I mean, we want to know what the citizens of Dorsey Town think, that's why we're.
There's going to be a show behind you.
All right, yeah.
Little dancing characters.
Welcome back.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. For those that haven't heard this voice before, it's Sheila Cook. I'm the property owner of 1313 Ellis Road here in Mount Airy. I had shared with this fine council back in December, and then with the mayor in January, the fact that my family has been, four generations at least, to my knowledge, here in this town, yet I own a piece of property today that has no water or sewer. So when you all go home tonight, you'll be able to turn on a faucet or flush a toilet where at 1313, that is not possible. My real estate agent had been here previously to share that I had three offers on the property, but because there is no water and sewer, I cannot sell it. Unfortunately, I cannot live in it, so it just kind of sits there, and unfortunately, it's becoming an eyesore, and I really would like to do something with that property. So my request for this annexation of Dorsey Town is not a want, it's a need for me. I know that there are some that are in Dorsey Town that are opposed, and that's fine, so if this council and mayor, if you see fit, to just allow those that need it to have it, I would be much grateful, very appreciative, because my father, almost as of today, has been deceased for the last 13 years, and I'm holding on to a piece of property that will not be a legacy to my children and grandchildren, because there's nothing that we can do with it. So I just really ask you to consider allowing this annexation to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheila, could I ask you a question?
You may.
So you said that, you know, you would, you would like us to even consider people who wanted it versus people who don't?
Yes.
If you did want it, would you be willing to pay the difference between what the developer would pay and what you would be?
Absolutely.
You would be, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I think the, what's, is the estimate was, when we were running numbers, around 18,000 is what we was, when we were talking, I sat down with Barney and John and Monica, we were talking numbers. What do we think?
That's the connection fee, 18,400.
Right.
But that's not tying into the main, that's not run the pipe to the house.
Or doing the, changing the plumbing in the high.
Or capping your well.
Capping the well, shutting down the septic.
It's got to be per property, right?
So there's a pretty substantial cost that goes with it.
That doesn't scare me as much as not having water or having a piece of property that I can eat nothing with.
Yeah, for you, I understand. And if you're going to sell the property, you'll recoup it right away, right there. If that makes sense for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm Mitch Thomas. I was born and raised in Dorsey Town, and I still live in Dorsey Town.
Welcome.
And I didn't get, we didn't build our house to be able to sell something, we built it to live in. That's what we planned to do, and I'm older, and I'd like to stay there until I'm gone. But I did want to leave this letter with you. I'm writing in regards to the proposed petition for the annex, for annexation of Dorsey Town. There has been several attempts to annex Dorsey Town over the years. That's been over and over since 1988. I am opposed to the annexation of Dorsey Town into the town of Mount Airy. Thank you.
Thank you. You want to go next, or you want to go last? I'll give, it's up to you. Okay. No, you go right ahead now, I just, I thought since you're representing the builder, you might want to go last.
I appreciate that, council members, but again, for the record, Noel Manalo, Law Offices of Miles and Stockbridge, here on behalf of Frall Developers, owner of the approximately four acres that's as yet undeveloped in the Dorsey Town property, which is the subject of the petition for annexation, just wanted to reiterate for the record all the statements we've made previously. And again, to put it in context, the, my client did initially seek, at least as far as in terms of what I've been involved in, in 2011, tried to get just the four acres annexed into the town. And then the town had to undergo its master plan revisions pursuant to Maryland law, so that was put on hold for approximately four to five years. So once that was complete, 2016, when I became directly involved, engaged by Frall, we began petition for just the, the only acreage that we owned in this enclave. And went through the process, and obviously, through that process, the feedback that came back from the planning commission was, well, if we're going to annex these four acres, when you look at the map, you see this donut hole of Dorsey Town, why not take the whole thing in? And so that's, you know, again, that was certainly from a planning perspective, a valid position for the planning commission to take. So we took that under advisement, withdrew our petition for just our four acres, and decided to see, okay, let's see if we can get other participants in the, in the enclave to participate. So we did get the sufficient number of petitioners, and obviously, that's now how you have the petition before you these last couple of years. So again, I, you know, I think from, from my client's particular perspective, clearly, they've been wanting to get into the town for however long because of the availability or the synergies with, with public utilities, but again, there's all, all sorts of reasons why, as a town, you'd want to ultimately take care of this enclave, acknowledging that you've, you're already providing services to the area, acknowledging that MDE could any day have a consent order for you to connect any of these other properties. And as I've stated repeatedly, you should view it as sort of an opportunity to be a little bit forward-thinking here. You have a property owner that's coming in, that's going to be developing property, having to go through all of your processes at the planning commission, undergo, you know, the scrutiny of that process, and also have to abide by all of those laws, rules, and regulations, put in the infrastructure that's related to it, while at the same time, you know, we've again offered to pay for the connection fees, that quantifiable amount for the water and sewer hookups for anyone else that would, would need to connect as it relates to existing residents. So again, I just would, I would look at it as mostly, you know, this is an opportunity. Ms. Thomas referenced that there have been repeated attempts previously. So clearly there is a logic to looking at this. I mean, if you, again, if you just pulled up the map of the town and you saw the donut hole, anyone in, in, in planning would say, okay, this is clearly another area that needs to be ultimately brought into the town boundaries. And, you know, Maryland law has a process for that and obviously we're totally respecting the process to the extent that, you know, the town, obviously I think a lot of you are familiar with it. If, if it were to be approved, there's clearly an opportunity for referendum. So it's not as if existing residents don't have, you know, a continued opportunity to weigh in on any decision that y'all make. I don't, I don't obviously want to minimize the importance of this decision. Clearly you're dealing with the future of this particular, I would, I would consider historic part of the town or part of the area, not necessarily part of the town proper. But, I mean, ultimately I think it would benefit the town for the, for Dorsey Town to be part of your municipal area. With that, I'll, I'll conclude and obviously available to answer any questions.
My concern, I don't know about anybody else, my concern is the sheer costs to the homeowners. You know, once, you know, you're paying, I, I've forgotten the exact dollars, but it's a, a fairo, it's not that large of a percentage of what the total amount that they're gonna have to pay.
So total, in terms of the, the water connection charges and sewer hookup fees that the town would charge, it's approximately, say, sixty-six thousand for the, available to any of the eleven existing residents.
Right, but the total dollars that they'll have to pay is a lot more. They're gonna have to have their septic shut off, they're gonna have to have their wells filled, they're gonna have to pay to, to connect up to the system when we get there.
Right.
And, and they're gonna force, they're be, they're be forced to do that by being annexed into the town.
Hold on, that's what I need to clarify. Is that so? That is not. Are they forced to hook up? That's what, that's a question I asked council and the answer was no. Not if there was a hardship, financial hardship and you gave like three reasons why it would not. And by the way, I'm not pro or against the annexation. It's whatever I think the people want, the democratic process ought to work. So I don't have a dog in this fight. It's whatever y'all want. But that being said, I'd like it to be factual.
So can, can we have people in the town that we don't require to hook up to our system? To continue to run on well and septic?
I know one.
It's a question of timing.
Okay.
So I'm looking for the section here.
And I saved your response.
You have the section number.
Yeah, the section number is town code.
One oh nine.
Yeah, one oh nine, nineteen dot five.
So under our town code, what it says is, is that once a residence that is not on public water or sewer becomes, and I'm paraphrasing now, reasonably near, proximate to basically the infrastructure necessary to bring water to it, generally interpreted to be the mains, then under our code, the resident is required to apply for connection to our public facilities. If granted, they have three years in which to connect from there being granted that. But that three-year period can be extended for another three-year period. And I believe the ordinance goes on even beyond that.
It doesn't go on to say, and these are your words, that the property, if it's being serviced by available adequate working water supply, that they can get a waiver and that, yeah, that, hold on, let me read the whole thing. A property owner may apply for, receive for an extension, a three-year period by which property owners to make connection to the water for good cause shown, including the town's water supply and/or capacity is limited. The property owner has been granted a water and sewer allocation permit. The property is being serviced by an available adequate and working supply well and/or connection, which is on the same connection. But it sounded like what it was, you were trying to say was if their system is working, they don't have to hook up? I'm sure that's part of the problem.
We would have to give them extensions.
They don't wanna be forced to hook up.
That's correct. The point, the, the point is that they may, might be, first, the first question is, on annexation, are any of our facilities quote reasonably near them at this moment? Cause it's not until those mains are close to them that the obligation to apply for water is triggered under our ordinance. So if you have a piece of property within the town that's on septic and well that is not reasonably proximate to our mains, there is no statutory or ordinance requirement for them to apply to hook up. It is only when their properties are near. Now, that's obviously a very loose definition, isn't it?
Interpretation.
But I think that what is clear is, well, as I understand it, and I did consult a town engineer on this, is that there is an extension of mains that would service the new development that would only partially serve only, I think, three of the residences for water and none of the residences for sewer. Translating that, that means that you, in order to bring mains close to these properties, you'd have to specifically construct infrastructure for that purpose apart from what's needed for this proposed development. So I guess the bottom line is, is are they reasonably proximate at this time to trigger the obligation to apply for a connection to water and sewer through the town? You know, I don't know, but the answer's probably not. I mean, we, as I understand it, you need more infrastructure to do that. And then even if you consider that they are, or if one day they will be proximate to mains, water and sewer, as the mayor points out, and as I think I pointed out by, in emails to all of you, quoting the town code, you might have to apply, but they're an assortment of extensions.
They can get waivers.
They can get waivers. It's not like there's gonna be an annexation and the next day the property owners have to apply and pay for all this.
We have one example on Buffalo Road, I won't use the gentleman's last name, I'll use his first name, Ted. He had a working well, he's right next to our infrastructure. And he got a waiver because he didn't wanna tie in, we gave him one. Because we didn't wanna add the capacity to our system.
What, how, what's MDE's feeling? Do you know?
Well.
I mean, cause I, I always thought that, that they were requiring wells in the town to be shut down when you get in the water system.
The answer is I don't know the MDE having actively pursuing.
Okay, good, well, that's good.
The requirement that people, that, that, in other words, you can't have people within the town who are on well and septic.
Okay, good.
I'm not aware of that. Certainly, if a well or septic fails, the MDE has the power to order us to extend water and sewer. And that's true for properties inside the town. It's also true, as the Secours will attest, to property which at the time and now is just beyond the borders of the town. So the MDE always has the power to do that.
Actually, even if they were annexed, again, just looking at the facts, I don't care what y'all do. And if they're already in the town and your system's failed, you'd have a much easier shot than the Secours did of getting your water and sewer. That's all I'm saying, just think about all the facts.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Larry?
Yeah, I'm gonna put the cart a little bit before the horse, only because we're listening to comments right now. One of the things that I'll be bringing up as we go into council discussion is the possibility of us creating a MOU, a memorandum of understanding that basically grandfather's the existing residents to stay on their well and septic as long as they own the property. Which I think would play into what Midge's concern is and, and some of the other property owners. So basically, as long as you own the property, then you would be grandfathered in, you could stay the way that you wanna stay. And then if your well fails or something, that would trigger us to have to come in and help you in terms of correcting that scenario. So just be aware, that's, that's the way I'm thinking as we go through this conversation, is that we should be able, and Tom, I've talked to Tom about it and it sounds like that's a possibility for us as a council to waiver or to provide a grandfather clause to the existing residents.
Bob?
And I, you know, Larry, I had something that I was gonna offer that yours does perfectly along the same lines, that, you know, there may be a reason for us to help. And I, and I think we could do that, but we have to be very, very careful that because we offer help to one community that's, you know, kinda different than, than the rest out there, that we, we don't wanna make this a standard practice that, you know, you get.
I'm not talking about financial.
Larry's not talking about spending, he's just talking about us allowing them to stay on their well and septic.
Grandfiring them in so that they can stay, if they wanna stay on well and septic, they can.
For those that don't fit in there, you know, I don't remember who I discovered, maybe it was you yesterday.
Yeah, and I appreciate the conversation.
No, we're having some good discussion.
Definitely, just to underline the point very, very quickly. I mean, when you did annex leaves the church property, I mean, again, it, it sort of speaks to this potential interpretation of the requirement. I mean, clearly that, you could argue that's proximate to all of these residents we're talking about. But again, there were no requirements for them to connect.
Thanks, Ed. Next? Welcome.
My name's Glen Farina, thirteen oh six North Main Street. I agree with Larry, but the thing of it is, I mean, grandfather, what if we decide to sell a property?
Well, if, if this occurs and you decide to sell the property, then, you know, your, your price would be set accordingly or it would transfer depending on how.
If it would transfer, that wouldn't be a problem, but.
Yeah.
You know, like, you could never sell, you know, an extra fifty thousand or whatever the cost of a good water and sewer would.
Well, yeah, no, I would say that, you know, this is only one caveat to, to me accepting or, or being favorable to this annexation. The other thing would be some form of compensation from Frall.
Water and sewer.
Well, if that's the case, I mean, you gave us a letter the other week.
Now, water and sewer might substantially increase the value of your property.
Yeah.
Particularly if your well or septic are getting old.
Buyer has to, or if I, if the buyer has to, you know, pay for it when.
Well, we need a little clarification, Barney. When we were talking earlier about the potentially eighteen thousand dollars. I mean, we know from, from this most recent annexation agreement that we're looking at fifty-nine hundred dollars in connection fees. Okay, how did we get from fifty-nine hundred up to eighteen thousand, which was a number we've been working with for the last couple of meetings? Does that include things like water connection, impact fees, design engineering costs, excavation, construction, installation, backfilling, all that stuff?
Not engineering, not construction, none of that. It's just impact fees make up the difference.
So that's.
There's like a fire company fee, there's a water expansion fee, there's several in the list in the code. Could add up to the eighteen four.
Yeah, I think Barney, if I remember, we were talking about what it could cost them completely. It was closer to maybe twenty-four. Thinking about the price of shutting down a septic, filling a well and actually physically, you know, drilling a hole in your foundation eighteen inches below, you know, below the freeze point and actually hooking your house up. There's, there's sizable more dollars.
Yeah, and I've, as I've discussed or, or talked, talked about this, I mean, I've, I've used the term on the rim and out the door, you know. What's it gonna cost?
Yeah, what sounds good.
Yeah, because there's all these fees. So I think we have a pretty good list of, of everything that's involved in it and is a, you know, there's at least a dozen things listed there that would.
Yeah, is that the paper that you gave?
Yeah, so right now, this current annexation agreement only pays for the water connection chargers and sewer hookup fees, which is fifty-nine hundred dollars. So that's, that's what Frall is offering right now.
My wife and I are partially retired, so we can never incur them, them kinda charges. And everything's fine with our stuff, thank God. A lot of people have problems, but I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be in favor of it unless, you know, it was right to the door, so.
So if you didn't have to pay anything out of pocket, then you would be in favor of it?
Of course. I mean, I don't have anything to gain right now, as long as everything's working well. I mean, if I get, well, I get trash collection, lease protection.
You'd get, you'd pay, you'd have taxes too.
And taxes.
You'll get, you'll get a level of tax. I mean, if, if you came in and you were hooked up, you would have town taxes and you would be paying for your water and sewer, which you have free now.
Say, I have nothing to gain unless everything, I would be in favor.
Well, they wouldn't be paying for the water and sewer unless they used the water and sewer.
Right.
But you would be paying for trash pickup, street lights.
If you live in the house, you're paying for water and sewer.
So that is costs you would incur. But I think there's a way to get around you having to hook up to the town's water and sewer, which I think is.
You could maybe waive that for a certain period of time.
Kill it for me, I can tell you. But it actually could be a good safety factor. You got a big example sitting back there. They lost their water and sewer and if you're not in the town, it's gonna be hard on them.
Well, you know, I tried a few years ago to get water and sewer and I wasn't even willing to pay for it, but I couldn't move anybody. I mean, I, I understood you had to be consecutive to the person next to you to get it and I wasn't, so.
Well, you have, you have to be, you have to touch the town at some point. Contiguous to the property of the town already.
Right, that's what I understand.
And by tying all of yours together, you gain that contiguous status.
Well, the only way, like I said, I'd be in favor of it if it was right to the door, so.
Yeah, right, okay.
Now, I do have a question for Glen. Cause I, I did speak to you about this. And I know that you own property next door.
Right.
And there was nothing on his property, but he would, eventually you would like to sell it.
Right.
But he could only sell it if it's got water.
I know, but the thing of it is, I don't have to sell it.
Right, you don't have to, but I mean, so, but my question would be, would that have to have a private line going to, I guess it would, right?
Well, I'd even consider having it just tapped so I could get, get a house in there, you know. Not to have to run it all the way to the house, but for my own residence, I need it to go all the way to the house.
I would say that everything that's been written to this point is only to existing owners with existing residences. So anything that's in here would not apply to the parcel next door.
Right, well, we, you know, make nothing of it.
Yeah, yeah, I suspect when you came in with a plan to develop that parcel next door, they're gonna require the hookup.
Yeah.
All right, well, the problem is my well's on that property, so.
Oh, you, you can't subdivide them. Well, your option, your option would be you'd have to hook up both properties and then you'd forget the well. Yeah, okay. You'd forget the well and septic, okay.
So anyway, so keep it short, I'm not in favor of it.
Okay, thanks. Welcome, sorry to make you wait at the end there, but.
I got last, I'm Jeff Morrison, I'm at twelve oh five North Main. And if Larry had said that last time we were meeting here as far as grandfather within, I wouldn't be here today because they say I, I also have nothing to gain. I have water, I have sewer, there's other street, I'm that little diamond between it. I get trash, I guess that'd be it, all the lights, just like that. But I have trash pickup now and I pay for it. So I don't have a lot of benefits. I also have another property, a house that I've rented on that piece of parcel. If the development was going to throw some water down there for me and hook up for everything I got, then.
You the triangle on the other side of the street? I, I know where you are, okay.
Yeah, so, you know, I just don't have anything to gain, you know, my aunt on the other side. Just, you know, we have water, we have sewer, we have, I'm pretty myself sufficient out there. Plus the fact I don't wanna lose Dorsey Town.
So are you saying with the grandfather clause, you would be acceptable to this?
For me, the grandfather clause, yes. If I decided to at some point in time, or my, my kid decided at some point in time that they wanna do it, then that's fine.
Yeah, and you have three, are there three houses on, on one property over there that you own?
That's correct. It's a substantial amount of money to put three properties on your, on your town.
I mean, I think the grandfather clause, it's a great idea to, to rock it, but I'm, from what the code is reading, I don't think you're required anyway.
Okay. Thank you very much, Tim.
Sure.
All right, assuming, remember, buddy? Okay, well then, let's, let's move on to ordinance's resolutions. The first one we've got is the annexation resolution number forty-two, which is Dorsey Town. Do I see a, a motion to bring that one up?
Bring the motion up.
All right, do I have a second? Okay, I'll take Larry and Jason. Motion and second, Larry, Jason's second. Okay, discussion.
Yeah, I'll start, a neat clarification from Tom. As I read through the email, what I understand is that if we put a condition on this agreement, on this annexation, at what point do we have to hear back from the Frall, from Frall Development? Does it, is it at this meeting? Is it within two days? Is it, you know, how does that work?
The section forty-four dash six does not say. It basically says that at the legislative session designated for action upon said petition, the council may propose that the same be granted, I didn't write this, same be granted subject to conditions. In the event that the petitioners fail to attend said meeting or attended the same but failed to object to any of the said conditions, they shall be deemed to have consented to the same in the event that said petition is granted.
That's from the state, isn't it?
Must, it has to. And said conditions shall be binding upon the petitioners, each of them and all persons thereafter acquiring an interest in the property so annexed. Now, as I read that, you could probably imply that the objection needs to come at the same meeting. I say that because that subsection takes pains to say that if somebody fails to attend the meeting, there's no objection therefore in the meeting. And therefore the condition adheres to the annexation resolution. That would be my best guess as to what this means. And, but, does it absolutely say?
Well, my follow-on question, Frall attorney is here. Okay, and are you, are you able to accept or reject conditions if we put them on here tonight?
Yeah, I'm certainly prepared to, at least to the extent which my clients, you know, advise me what they're gonna do.
Yeah, all right. Second question, MOU, is that something we can deal with? Do we need to deal with that in conjunct? Do we need to deal with that in conjunction with the annexation agreement or following, is it a separate issue? And what's the procedure to make sure that we get, if we do pass the annexation agreement, that we're able to get the MOU grandfather clause for the existing residents?
You know, you, you probably would want to add that as a condition to the annexation that you've achieved an MOU.
So we, we agree to pass the MOU provided, to pass the annexation provided that we can come up with an agreeable MOU that includes a grandfather clause for the properties that are already there. Or deferral, until such time as they require water, or, or sewer. Any other discussion?
As far as the grandfather clause, which I don't have really any objection to, but one of the gentleman brought up if he was to sell the property. And that's kind of what I would be interested in, in figuring out what we would be looking for. And although I'm in, in favor of the waivers and I don't want to force anyone to do something that, that they don't really need to do, but at the same time, I'm looking at trying to help out both parties. That at some point in some time being contiguous with the, with the rest of the town and making sure that all of the properties stay updated, because if someone else is trying to buy that property. And then them figuring out, oh, they have water and sewer, there might be, you know, I don't know how long water and, and wells and those types of things last. And it might be easier for someone coming in to say, I just want to be hooked up to the town. In trying to sell, is that when a grandfather clause might come to an end? And then at that point, we would, we would talk about further connection to, to the property.
That's a possibility, that would all be part of the negotiation.
Yeah, I would think it would transfer.
If I can read what I, well, I wouldn't think the grandfather clause would.
No.
I would think that any financial assistance that's coming.
At some point, it has to end.
Let me read what I wrote as a draft, existing owners with residential dwellings in the annexation area permitted to continue using their existing water well and septic systems until they fail. As reported by the owner, they sell, transfer the property to new ownership, the MDE requires transition to town services.
Good point.
Or the town becomes aware of an impending failure of a water or sewer system.
Larry, I think that's very well, well done.
Yeah, and so that's.
But I think you may get a rub if it doesn't transfer.
Well, what needs to transfer is any assistance that's being made available by Frall.
Correct, and those, the dollars that Frall has pledged would carry no matter through the property.
And it should, but the gentleman brought up the point that if he sells his property, now he's gonna put a condition on the new purchaser that he has to tie into town water and sewer, and I think that's gonna kill it for these people.
Or, or he may have to hook up before he sells it.
I would just remove and I would, I would make it transferable to the property, I mean, that's your intent anyway, I believe. Again, I think you're protected by the code, but I like the belts and suspenders approach.
How much, this is Mr. Sikora.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, Mr. Sikora.
How much did it cost you to hook up to the town water and sewer?
Question, what was, what was the cost to you when you had to do this by yourself?
So, over the course of three years, we spent fifty thousand dollars, including legal fees.
Yeah, it's a nightmare when their well failed.
And that was water.
Okay.
Minus legal fees, I mean, you said twenty-four-ish, you know.
Yeah, that was what we kind of, when we ballparked it today.
I mean, we spent ten thousand dollars in just the connection, the labor, like, that's what we fed our contractor.
Okay, so then it sounds like our twenty-four is, is fairly close.
It's a, well, so eighteen plus ten.
Yeah, okay, oh, eighteen plus ten?
Yeah.
Okay, well, but you may have had to, but I think you had to bring a line further. You had to bring a line a lot further.
Each lot will be individual, I don't think you can put a number, depends on where you're located.
These, these lots, these lots will get, well, the builder is, as part of his infrastructure is gonna bring up, bring closer, so would, so, so it would be less, so.
Worst case scenario was because we're running it through three other, two other properties.
Right.
So, I mean, our, our, the amount of work was, you know, more sizable.
Right, okay.
But.
Are you on septic as well?
We're still on our septic system.
Still got a septic?
Mm-hmm.
Interesting.
So I'd be curious about, like, if we would get a waiver for continuing our septic, or, you know.
I think that's.
Under this, you would get, you would get grandfathered in as I proposed.
Yeah, grandfathered in, and, yeah, I mean.
You are one of the properties being annexed, but, okay.
Yeah.
But, I mean, our wells ran into issues like two months after we moved in, and so, like, we realized that we were gonna have a very expensive road ahead of us. So with this grandfather clause and with, like, how a new property owner might, you know, if it's not spelled out right up front that this is something that's contingent, you know. I think it needs to be very clear that there's a solution for selling the properties as well. Like, if it's grandfathered in and it transfers to the new ownership, that's the simplest way to do it, probably, but, you know, to, to have bought a property and then to stomach that.
Yeah, I understand, I, I remember all, all that, that was a, I felt, we felt really bad about that, actually. Particularly when you found out that you didn't quite touch the town, so you couldn't be annexed.
Yep.
It was, it was like, it was a couple of feet, wasn't it?
Ten feet.
Ten feet, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that was the issue, you can't, had to be contiguous with the town. He, his property fell just short of touching the town, so we could not annex his parcel. We were not allowed to.
Then ten feet was in the center of a roadway, so if you're thinking about like where.
No, I, I remember, I remember all that, that's.
But I can answer any other questions, too.
Well, I'm just wondering, so you're technically not in the town.
Correct.
But you're using town water.
Water.
Okay, and sewer?
No, sewer.
No, just.
Oh, just water.
And MDE, we had MDE make a request, his, his well failed, and MDE said, hook these guys up, their well is failing, and so we complied with the MDE request.
This is, what's your address?
Yeah, we, we asked for MDE to do that to cover ourselves.
Eight zero eight Ellis Road.
Eight zero eight.
Yeah.
So, are you in favor of the annexation?
Uh, I am, from a principal standpoint, not from a have my neighbors pay as much as we had to pay standpoint, so, like, we're, we're on kind of both sides of this. I see the positives of being annexed and we signed in favor, but.
But as far as you paying taxes and.
I'm gonna pay our water bill.
Right, but you would have to also pay taxes.
Oh, yeah, I, I mean, it's what it is, right?
Okay. I just wanted to.
It seems to me, Larry, the only topic that we were kind of down to at the moment is the whether or not we want the grandfathering to carry to purchasers of the developed properties. Obviously, if somebody comes in and they've got an empty parcel and they're gonna put a house on it, that's gonna go through our whole design standard process and they're gonna have to hook that up if they're building a new house. But the houses that are already existing, whether or not those are gonna continue to be grandfathered in. You know, I guess I don't really have a problem with continuing to grandfather those in.
Well.
At some point, their wells and septics will fail, probably, and they'll come knocking on your door.
My well's a hundred years old.
Huh?
My well's a hundred years old, just that you know.
No, that's good.
Does that provide all three, all three houses?
Well, two.
Two, okay, all right. Well, yeah, I see that the, you know, and if that's what the council wants to lean toward, I certainly wouldn't object to it. I think, I mean, where it's, it's hard to set up here in balance, you know, we represent a town of ten thousand people. So we have to look at all of them too, and we will be representing you, so we have to look at you, and we do take care of property owners and, and Frall is one of the property owners. So, you know, we're, we're trying to, to balance everything out between the, all, all three entities. So, I would say from a town standpoint, I mean, I do have a sense that at some point we want these properties to transition. I think by default that's gonna occur, cause I think eventually you sell the property to a young family or something, and all of a sudden the water usage goes way up and, and you run into a well problem, or you run into a septic problem. At which point, you know, you're gonna be forced into a scenario where it's gotta be transitioned.
The state is raising the septic standards substantially, so if you just need to fix your septic, at some point it may become cheaper just to hook up.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the, some of the stuff the state's doing, they're, they're really going anti-well and septic.
Yeah, so, based on what I'm feeling from the table, I would, you know, I would want the grandfather clause to be transferable, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
But the second issue is that Frall has offered some financial compensation in the annexation agreement. And I'm, I'm not convinced it's an adequate amount of money for, for what they're asking for. And you don't have to stay standing up there if you, if you don't want to.
Thanks.
So what we had put together, and since the attorney's here and he said he can address this, is a condition to the annexation that was drafted by the attorney. And what it lists in it is pretty much every cost that I think Barney probably fed our town attorney, which is water connection charges, sewer hookup fees per the town code, impact fees, design engineering costs, excavation, construction, installation, backfilling, compaction, repaving costs, house connections and tie-ins, meters, legal easement costs. Capping costing, costs for the existing wells and sealing for septic units. That's a condition that we had drafted and, and, and Tom, if you can just make sure I, I do this right. I would put that in as a condition, and I'd like to know if that's something acceptable to Frall Development. And I'm hoping that the attorney.
What was the dollar cost on it?
Well, there is no dollar cost, because Frall shall promptly after approval of a cost estimate by the town engineer, put up a security in the form of cash to be held by the town in escrow in irrevocable letter of credit, blah, 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 plus ten percent. So it's a substantial amount of money, and my question.
We do that for builders all the time, they post bonds like that, yeah.
Yeah, and we have eight existing residents over there other than Frall. We have eight existing residents, so this would be money and connection, all those associated fees for, for eight dwellings, existing dwellings. So, my question is, is that acceptable to the, to Frall?
To Frall, you want to address that?
If it, if it is, then that would be a condition of the.
Should maybe we, should maybe we discuss this and decide if it's what we want to offer?
I think it's probably, the proper procedure at this point is for whichever council person wants to, should probably make a motion to attach.
Have you seen this, are you aware of it?
Yes.
Are you made aware of it?
Yes, I sent it.
Okay.
All right, then I make a motion.
You want to make, yeah, go ahead.
To the annexation agreement that we had this, that would cover all the costs to y'all, everything that we have listed at least. And, and so that would be a condition to annexation resolution twenty eighteen dash forty-two, has everybody read this?
As, as well as, as, as well as the entire, the entire grandfathering process.
And the grandfather.
Tom said maybe we could send this out to him.
Okay.
Okay, good.
This is, this is to the door.
To the door, to, to the best of our ability, I mean.
But then.
On the rim and out the door.
So what I, what I did not hear is capping of their, their current system.
Actually, it is.
He did say, he said well capping.
Oh, okay.
He said well capping and sealing septic.
I, I pulled from this list and wrote out a list of everything, capping, capping costs of existing well.
So essentially hook them up to the town.
Yes.
At the cost of Frall.
Yes.
When the time comes.
When the time comes.
That'd be pretty sweet.
Well, you should have it.
You should have it.
I emailed.
We do that.
Yeah. Tom sent, it looks like this, wow. Right.
I put a lot of orange and yellow on mine, trying to take care of you.
I think, I think Larry was making that motion.
I made the motion.
And included the grandfathering in the motion, and I think, Dave, was it Bob who seconded it, Bob seconded it? Okay, so that's the motion we've got before us now.
So the question.
On the grandfathering clause, is that it transfers?
Yes.
It is to the benefit of successors and interested. Right, it goes, it goes to, right, successors get it.
So, now that we ask.
They could technically still stay on theirs, not pay taxes, but when sell.
Well, they're gonna pay taxes.
They're gonna pay town taxes.
Okay.
They're gonna pay taxes, but they can stay on their well and their septic until it fails.
Okay, when, when you guys signed the paper, because we got the list of all the petitioners that signed for that, for that hookup initially, is that what you all were thinking that was going to happen without all the fees and everything else? You're shaking your head, yes, you're shaking your head, yes, so you were expecting that?
I mean, I wasn't writing.
No, I know that, but when someone comes to you and says, hey, we're, we're looking to get you guys annexed into the town and water and sewer, and all of a sudden you're like, yes.
I'll add to that, that improvements to Ellis Road are kind of a factor for that as well.
Yeah, that would get done, yeah.
I would, I, I hear yours, Sikors, they already paid theirs, portion of theirs.
Yeah.
And as long as they are included, where they get reimbursed.
Yeah, for sewer?
For what they had initially hooked up.
I mean, I'm not sure how we break that up.
Because they were, they were part of it initially, where their, something failed, they needed to hook up.
Yes.
They had to pay.
And that's, I mean, that's occurred, that's history, yeah.
Right, so. I, I understand that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we could go back, I mean, I would love to, but I, I don't think, I know.
I think, I think.
I know, I would love to, but I don't know if we can.
Procedurally, Tom says the first thing we need to do at this point is take a vote.
I'm not forgetting about you guys.
Is take, is take a vote to attach these to the annexation, and then it goes to, to Frall's attorney, who will have to address whether or not they are interested in accepting that, so.
Larry has made that motion.
Larry has made that motion and you have seconded it, includes what Larry read, which is the, the, you know, paying more stuff and, and the grandfathering, they don't have to actually hook up until they need to. And, and including putting money in an escrow account so that when they reach the point where they need to, it's there for them, town will hold the funds. That's, that's the, the motion to attach that to the annexation agreement.
One, one more question.
Yeah, okay.
If we go through this and, and we pass this, and Frall's attorney stands up and says, that's not acceptable, do we have an ability to go back and adjust?
We can always make another motion and.
Well, we can make a contention upon them agreeing to.
We can make a different motion, somebody come back with, with a lesser motion.
Right.
Okay.
I just have one question, and I know this is probably out of context, but the, the one thing that does concern me is, I, I knocked on doors, I've heard people tonight come up here and say they don't want the annexation, okay? And one of the reasons why you said you don't want it is because you don't want to pay taxes, so.
Taxes?
If.
You have property taxes.
You know, you, you certainly don't want to pay eighteen to thirty thousand dollars to hook up for water and sewer, but I also heard that you don't want to pay taxes. And so that concerns me, because if we were to go forward and we were to have this condition and we were to have an MOU that would, you know, allow you at some point to hook up, in the meantime, you're going to be paying taxes.
Yes.
Is that agreeable?
Yeah.
Is that agreeable to everybody that we heard too? Right. Right, so I, I just wanna, I just want to make sure that, I don't want you thinking that we didn't hear you say, I don't want to pay taxes, okay, yeah.
We had, we had one quick question, if I can, just.
Two, two brief points.
Just real, real quick.
Yeah, my name's Jeff, so as far as the, the MOU or this amendment to the annexation proposal, is this gonna be the exact language or is this kind of the general idea? My main.
It would be negotiated in the, still in the future, it's not, it's not done yet.
So my main concern is the use of the word home, so I don't know if that's gonna be improvement building, cause our lot has two residential homes on it and has a mixed-use building on it. So if it were defined as improvement or building or something more broad because of three homes, that would obviously be agreeable to us, but we don't want to get locked up into, because it's not defined as a home, that somehow that would not be included.
Yeah, I mean, your property gets complicated, because you have three houses on one property, or three dwellings on one property. So, it's kind of like, you know, twenty-five thousand bucks a pop, we're talking seventy-five thousand as compared to the farinas over here that, you know, could only see one-third of that amount. So, I don't know where, where we, how we make that fair.
So, one is capable of being hooked in, but it's currently detached right now, so it's gonna be settled again.
Is one not a residential lot?
They're mixed, the one that's not is mixed-use, it's zoned as both residential and commercial.
The one is, but she's hooked up in there right now, so.
See, I don't know what Tom, what that does to this annexation, is this a residential annexation or is it included?
Calls for, as the resolution is, or the petition, I'm sorry, is currently drafted and always has been, everything would be hit with an R two. Now, we also have a provision though, in our code, that talks about lots of record and, you know, things that preexist, the application of our zoning code to properties. you know, things that preexist, the application of our zoning code to properties. So I'm sure that the use would continue-
But if it changed use, you'd lose it.
You're going to have a problem.
But, but the other thing that you have to remember, too, is that to the extent your new zoning is going to be different than what the county has it zoned, and the county's already said it's going to be different, then you have to achieve a waiver from the county, yes, to, the county to allow us to have zoning control with our new zoning over the property, or else you, if you don't get that waiver, you have to wait five years. You don't have zoning control for five years. Now, the county's indicated they will go ahead and issue the waiver. I'm not sure the county, however, is aware that there's some commercial use over there. I'm not sure, I assume they are. But when they said they would grant the waiver, they really talked about the density of residential zoning in the county versus what would be allowed in our R2 zone. So I, you know, I, I don't know, but just there's, there's a lot of complications to that.
So a natural segue to my last point would be, would the council consider opting out of joining the annexation, where my property and my aunt's property across the street, if they were to opt out, remain as Dorsey Town, the other remaining lots would still be contiguous to the town, would still allow for touching all the way around, so that anyone who wants to be a part of it could, and just that one segment of Main Street would remain Dorsey Town and would remain off of the utilities.
Would they become an enclave, then, which wouldn't be, would be illegal?
And, and, and as a practical matter-
No, they're technically not. They, we went, we ran that years ago when it came up.
Yeah, and, and I don't think the law allows you at this stage to carve out some of the properties and annex portions. No, it's just that your resolution, your petition is what it is.
It asks for-
So it's not, it's not our resolution, we were included in this as part of Dorsey Town, so we're kind of being dragged along by trail in this, so that would be, it'd be nice for us to have an option to say, we submit a new petition where we're named, our names are not included on that, so just bring it to the attention of the council.
I assume at some point a fair, I mean, because we require a substantial portion of the registered voters in that annexation area to sign on the petition, so presumably if they're-
It was five, it was five people, so it was only twenty-five percent of the twenty, so it was only the five people that signed on. So that's, that's kind of our issue.
Yeah, they were not on the petition.
Fraw being one of them, so.
Okay, all right.
There's a rate to petition for a referendum office.
Okay.
You know, you also mentioned Ellis Road. I wonder what you're talking about, Ellis Road.
I'm sorry, man.
It would be, she said we've mentioned Ellis Road. Ellis Road, I, I believe under the plans would be upgraded to a real road.
It would be transferred to the town.
Ellis Road is owned by each homeowner.
I understand, I actually own to the middle of Main Street down the road here.
On one side, on the other.
Right, it's that way here.
And I told you before, some of the houses, the road that's there now goes to the, almost to the front door, so what are you going to do then? You could, you know, this may-
Those, those, in all li-
This is private property that belongs to the-
In all likelihood, we would not be changing what's basically a driveway, but the development plans have not come in yet. I mean, before anything starts, Fraw developers would come in with a full development plan, show them what they're going to do on the road, where they're going to build the housing, go through a design process, but Ellis Road would be upgraded.
I think she's asking about, about current, current, current residences that aren't, you're, you're talking current residents that aren't, you've already got houses and everything, and you own to the middle of the road.
Right, and that's typical, I mean, that's, that's on Main Street, that's the way it is.
But, we, we actually, I'm sorry, but we actually walked it. There's two houses that are in the back of where her property is.
You have to turn and go this way.
And you have to go down Ellis Road and go in the back. And what she's basically saying is, I believe you own some of that property that is adjacent to her property, but the problem is, what she's saying is, the houses are basically almost on the road, there is no front yard. So if we're going to make that road in conformance to the town code, and it's so wide, then where is that property, that property is going to be taken from her property, so how does that work?
Yeah, that's, that's, it would be.
But I, but I would say, I believe your property, the, the section of Ellis Road that you're talking about is, is around the back of Secora's yard, as it starts heading north-south.
On the curve.
Yeah, so my, yeah, and, I mean, Bob, you're on planning, I would, I would think that as any form of a site plan, whenever it occurs for Fraw development to develop the, the five lots down below, they would have to deal with those property issues, and, and I, I mean, it would surprise me, I'm not a planner by any means, but it would surprise me if they wanted that road to continue on a sharp left turn back behind your property.
If we are annexed to town, does Tom want to take that road?
No, 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 no.
That will come right back, that will come right back to our planning commission here, where you have a voice.
There, there will be a site plan, there'll be a public hearing, correct?
Yes.
True? A public hearing that you would come and be able to speak to, and the bottom line is, if you own the property, a developer can't come in there and just take your property, okay?
Let's, again, let's get back to where, to where we are on the topic we're on about adding that, because that may be a deal breaker. So Larry made a motion of what we want to add to the petition, Bob seconded it, so that's all we're voting, we're not voting on the annexation, we're just voting on adding that to the annexation petition. So let's have, take a vote on that, all in favor say aye. Aye. That was unanimous. So I think probably at this point, Fraw would need to respond to our adding that. I don't know if you're prepared, but this would be your time to, to look at that.
Thanks, Council President, I did have some heads up from town attorney as it related to Councilmember Hushar's drafting of a condition. Really appreciate the thought and effort, as you well described, there's a, clearly a balancing act that's, that you as the town has to, has to take into consideration. And when it comes to the wheels on the rim and out the door, it's, it's more, it's really, there's a practical limitation. I mean, if you told us today, okay, for all, all, all eight are going to connect the minute that you come in with your site plan, I think it's very easy, it's easier to quantify what that cost would be. So in thinking it through, when you have property owners in, in varying desires as to whether they even want to connect, the timing becomes an issue, whether the line is going to have to skip someone that wants to take advantage of the grandfathering, doesn't want to connect. So as, as much as we understand, obviously, the impetus behind the requirement for this totality of cost, I, I don't think we can commit to that only because it's such an unknown. But what we can commit to, again, is, as far as addressing these concerns, and I think it's going to actually for you all to consider, I think it will play well with, with, or dovetail well with your grandfathering discussion, since we've already committed to the approximately sixty, sixty-six thousand dollars for the connection fees, the water and sewer connection fees charged to the town, I think what would be cleanest in terms of obligation that we could clearly meet, and that the town can clearly see is met, is we, we increase that amount. So we say, okay, town, a condition of a hundred thousand dollars would be posted to the town as a condition of this annexation. At the point in time then, that we are annexed, obviously, we're having to come in, you know, again, say we go, get through all the referendum process, should that occur, and, and the annexation is finally approved, after, you know, all appeal periods run, we're, we're not going anywhere, we're coming in with a site plan for our four to five acres. So we're still obviously abiding by the town rules, laws, and regulations as it relates to the infrastructure that would be common with the other, other residents. If in that time, you know, say before we even got to the second planning commission workshop, someone's well or septic failed, and you were under MDE consent, there's a hundred thousand dollars that's available for that particular property owner to, you know, essentially go through the, the process of connecting. If it turns out that nobody wants to connect for a certain period of time, after which, you know, we've proceeded and gotten planning approval, have improvement plans, maybe at that point we know, hey, there's, we have more of a certainty in year, you know, five, six, seven years out, when we have improvement plans ahead, we can say, okay, look, we could do a really good cost estimate as to what it's going to cost. Planning commission at that point could say, all right, Fraw, you know, you're kicked in a hundred grand upon annexation, at this point in time, before you can pull building permits, or before we're going to, to approve your improvement plans, connect X, or, you know, at that point you sort of know. In, in other words, we're going to be coming forward with infrastructure to serve the new lots, maybe at that point in time, all the residents, none of the residents, two of the residents definitively do want to connect. So I think it's, it's cleaner in terms of a, a, a certain amount of money versus, you know, itemizing costs that we just don't know when, who, or, or sort of sequentially when those might be incurred. So I, I mean, I, I hope that kind of gets to what your concern is, it's like, look, all right, we, acknowledging that anyone that wanted to connect could, you know, you'll, you'll pay for those connection fees, well, there's obviously other costs involved for all, I mean, in terms of connecting. So, okay, here's a hundred thousand dollars, we're going to, you know, upon annexation, we'll submit our plan, and again, it's available at the town for the specific purpose of existing improvements to connect to the, to the system. And, you know, if people want to take advantage of that in terms of, okay, all of a sudden we're part of the town, we want to put our property on the market, there's a hundred thousand dollars that has been posted for that particular purpose, we want to, you know, put forward a plan, you know, hire an engineer, check on what easements might need to be acquired from others, and that sort of thing, we know that there's a hundred thousand dollars that's available to us as a new resident to be able to do that. So it gives you some flexibility, it also gives us a definitive sort of, we've met our obligation as, as, at least as it relates to annexation.
Are you saying they would, they could up the amount when it gets to planning, and they do another calculation?
No, I, I was saying, in terms of, planning commission has its own, obviously, authority to add whatever conditions on their sets of approvals.
Have you ever thought of escrowing during an estimate now, escrowing the total amount that today's cost?
That, and, and that's kind of speaking to the practical question, I mean, it, it's, it's difficult to, you know, we, we, we just sort of figured, okay, well, let's give them a ballpark round number that would, you know, if one or two people came in before we were already doing improvements, that would cover their cost to connect.
Yeah.
So that, I hope, I mean, for your consideration, obviously, you know, I, I know it's sort of a negotiation in the, in open session, but-
So, you're looking for us to give you a ballpark number, or you've used a hundred thousand dollars?
A hundred thousand dollars is what, what my client said, look, if, if it's, if it's going to help to sort of address those additional costs above and beyond water and sewer connection fees charged by the town.
So your client's at a hundred thousand instead of sixty-six thousand?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Allocation of that money, once it's in escrow, and the town is holding that money, how, how is that money allocated?
That's a whole nother issue, is it first come, first served, you know, the first guy knocks on the door, we build him out, and the other people are stuck?
Yeah, because eventually the money runs out, eventually, okay.
That's a whole nother issue.
Well, if somebody's well, if somebody's-
Yeah, but it is protection, I mean, you know, for y'all.
Close to what you're thinking of, though?
No, actually, what comes closer to what I'm thinking is twenty-five thousand bucks a head for eight existing property owners that would amount to two hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Two hundred thousand would make it pretty doggone reasonable.
Well, I guess the question to us is, do we want to redo our motion, or do we want to just table this point, tell them that's not acceptable?
I mean, I like the terms, I like the terms that he's bringing up, the way that he's bringing it about, but I would up that number to two hundred thousand.
Right.
And, I don't know, do we have to redraft the condition resolution?
Well, where you are right now is that, as I heard it, the condition has been objected to, and so therefore it is not a part of the resolution that's before you now, or the annexation agreement, or anything. So you're back to what the resolution, the petition, and the annexation agreement says right now, till such time as somebody would want to further condition it on something else.
Does that include the hundred thousand with the change, though?
No.
No, it's just back to-
There's been no motion from this body to attach a hundred thousand dollar condition.
Right, the question is, is there a motion to, to say, okay, to the hundred thousand, freeze it there? Because Larry's basic motion was every, you know, everything, and we're, the questions were back and dead, do we want to, do we want to re-motion what we know?
Yeah, I'm going to re-motion it, but I'm going to up that number to two hundred thousand.
Okay, so-
And I will wait a second.
Okay. So I just, so basically the plan is now Larry's proposal with the grandfathering and all those other things, but, but, and, and, right, that's right, doesn't, but the, but it would cost, but the builder will put two hundred thousand dollars in escrow-
Yeah.
Which is to be allotted up to twenty-five thousand dollars for each of the eight existing, because otherwise it becomes a first come, first served, so I'm thinking we want to do it-
Okay, I would accept that.
You know, which, you know what I'm saying, so, so in other words, there's twenty-five thousand dollars for each of the eight existing prop, is eight correct, do I have the right number?
Yeah, there's eight owners, of course, we have the one owner who's got three houses on his property, but he'd just be able to do one.
Yeah, so it's twenty-five thousand that's available for each one, whenever they come to the town and, and ask for it.
We have to, we need to have to-
Well, he's, he's-
Barney's got his pen up back there.
Well, this, I will say this, the Secores are on, the guys at Secores are on the sewer side.
Well, here's the deal with the Secores, you're part of the eight, because there's nine total owners, with Fraw being one of them, and you're part of the eight.
So you're part of the eight, Barney's got a pen up.
So that twenty-five thousand doesn't pay for your, your water and sewer mains? It just pays, just to get you to the property, your property line to your house?
And the hookup fees, and all the, the eighteen thousand charges, yeah.
Right, so would it be reasonable also to say extending, they're already probably going to be extending the water down where they're improving Ellis Road, but to extend the sewer up the same road, I don't think it would be too much cost to the, to the developer for the sewer line extension before the road goes in, but it would be a bigger cost for the homeowners to do it after the road goes in. So I would think you'd want to include water and sewer on the portion of Ellis Road that you would improve.
So you're saying that we should apply the twenty-five thousand to water and sewer, not just water? Or are you saying we need to ask for more money?
Well, twenty-five thousand does, I mean, the eighteen-four is for both water and sewer hookup, and then bring the sewer up the street with the water line to, you know, towards Main Street. That would at least take care of those few houses that are right there.
Gotcha.
It would make it much, it would also make it much easier for other houses, if theirs failed, to connect to it.
All right, and I see Dick, who's Chair of Water and Sewer, so, Dick, you obviously stand up.
Can I ask Barney a question for other?
Sure, I'm sure Dick has some issue.
I mean, wouldn't the developer have to, as part of the Ellis Road improvement and everything, wouldn't he be, isn't he funding, wouldn't he be funding water and sewer up the road?
Well, if you, without seeing the development plan, just what I would expect is, the water would come down from Main Street.
Yeah.
But the sewer flows downhill, it's going to be going to some ridge, is what I would think.
So he may, in other words, to, to cover his houses, he doesn't have to take sewer up to them.
Okay.
Because, because the sewer's coming, flowing down.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, so, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Those houses are too far up the hill, he wouldn't normally hook up, up to that for sewer. Yeah, that would be a substantial expense for a homeowner to add sewer running all the way down, later.
It would be less if you already have the road.
Well, but, but wouldn't planning take care of that at the design stage?
Yeah, that's, that's what I was saying.
I'm looking, I looked at that as a planning requirement.
I just want them to be, like, thinking that they would have to do that as well.
Yeah, the planning's probably going to require the sewer to run all the way, yeah, but that's, that's at the planning site plan level, at least that's what I think.
Well, Barney would have to make that part of the public works.
Right.
Right, right, but that's way, but that's way down the line.
It would compromise.
Dick?
Dick Swanson, 1107 South Main Street. Coincidentally, I'm Chair of Water and Sewer. I would suggest that since there was a motion that was approved and has been rejected by the developer as a representative, that the discussion be terminated because it's dangerous to negotiate at open session of the town council. And I suggest that you should go back and actually price out those, all those things you've been throwing around, guessing at numbers, and come in and say, if this is what we want them to pay for as a condition of annexation, this is what it's going to cost, and pass a motion that is based on fact. And that's in the interest, I think, of the public residents of Mount Airy.
Thanks, Dick. Although the numbers are, there was some planning that went in behind all those numbers. So Larry, it was your motion, you are correct, it has been rejected. And then Larry made a second motion, and Bob made a second to basically the 200,000, and leave it at that with the idea that we need a fixed number. You want to go forward with that, or?
With the allotments per lot and all those stipulations you all discussed. I don't know if you have to restate them.
So is, you know, $25,000 for those eight lots, is that, is that under or over where we should be?
I think, you know, with the caution that Dick threw out there, we can go forward with this motion, have it added to the annexation agreement, and then possibly give you time to look it over. And would we be able to table this for a month, or should we finish this out?
Again, the question goes back to that ordinance that's a little unclear. By when do they have to object? And one could read that to say they have until the close of this meeting to object. Just as counsel, I would echo what Dick has said. Gets very dicey to start throwing stuff around.
Yeah.
And by the end, this record looks like a bowl of spaghetti, and nobody knows who agreed to what. And that's okay if you have time to sort all that out. Remember, this is a very legal step that happens today if you approve this annexation. And to unravel that bowl of spaghetti after you've done that can be very problematic.
Can we go forward with the, with my motion and then stop at that point? Have everything drafted between now and march in accordance with that, and then bring this back for a vote in March?
Well, again, though, but the problem is, is that do they have until the close of this meeting to object to this?
Sounds like that's up to our discretion.
Well, maybe the thing to do is they now know what we want.
That would be most.
Okay, so perhaps we should table this for another month, and then we will reintroduce it in cases of, you know, just to cover our timing. We would reintroduce, we bring it back next month, see if there can be some getting together on the specifics of what you have there. And next month, have something that calls, because I think we've said, well, I think they have a pretty good idea of what we're looking for now.
Yeah.
Does that sound good?
And I agree with everything you said, Peter, except there's one entity that we forgot to ask, and that's you all. Are you willing to go another month? I know this has been going month by month by month. Is that something that you're willing to go through to get this right the first time?
Yes.
Okay, so.
All right, so I guess with the, the process would be, I guess, I will move, we table this until next month. Do I have a second?
You have a second.
I got a second from Bob. Any discussion on that?
Are we going to?
I will introduce afterwards. Yeah, yeah. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, I'm going to reintroduce the annexation. Do I have a second? Bob seconds it. It will be back on the agenda next month.
I would just ask that when the council convenes to go over numbers, if you can consider the fact that we do have three properties on our property, so that even if there's some special granting, and it's a close cluster, so it won't be a full three times factor, but to take into account that if it's approved as is, we would then still have to put the bill of that extra one to two times the cost.
All right, let's move on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ordinance 2018-20, this is added section to the town election regulations. And thanks, thanks, thanks for coming. Thank you. Add a section to the town election regulations pertaining to provisional ballots. This was carried over from January. We have the one, Bruce, this is your baby. I guess actually both Bruce and Dick, since you both serve on that commission. I have also, Bruce, I will say, I also provided the council with my version, which I think was sent on to you, which makes the.
So what version was in the back? What version is this?
That's probably not my version.
That's your version, I think. This is yours, right?
No, it's been redlined, so.
Okay, actually Debbie, I think, was putting both in the back.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the one that's got the red, because I asked for one in red so it would stand out. I made, the only change.
I saw what you had.
Right, the change that I made was, once a ballot has already been turned down, it only requires a majority to reject it, not a unanimous. And Tom was kind enough to check and find that other towns do that. So I'm not coming out of left field with that, my concern on that.
I think the one in the back, though, section H has the majority of the changes. And the copy that was given to me, H looks a lot different than Peter's original. So I would make sure that this is the copy that you should be looking at.
I saw, I got the one that Debbie sent out that was going to be posted on the email that came out to everybody.
Okay.
Does it say revised 2-1-19?
I'd have to pull my email up to look at it.
I got 2-4-19.
I would just say that we don't have any other provisions that I'm aware of in the procedures of the, of the board where we require unanimous approval. Everything has always been by a majority vote. And we would make these decisions during or post-election, so we wouldn't really have a meeting structure. It would more or less be an ad hoc, almost, motion of the board.
Yeah, my concern was, somebody comes in, swears they live in town. We don't think they do, so we give them a provisional ballot. You then go to the Board of Elections, and the Board of Elections are like, yeah, that guy's not registered. He can't vote. It then takes a unanimous vote to still reject that vote that has been rejected twice. And my perspective is, we're giving that vote a, we're assuming it's valid, and we should actually go the other way and assume it's invalid after both the county and the town have said it's an invalid vote. So a majority was a better system, I thought.
And just to sort of put it in perspective, if somebody came in prior to 5:00 and we were able to call up, and, you know, the person's standing there, and we call up and they say, no, they're not a registered voter, and here's the reason, we would just simply say to the person, we've double-checked, and no, you're not eligible to vote.
Correct.
And they would leave. There wouldn't be any vote or anything at that point. We would just be enforcing the requirements for voting.
Right, it's only after 5:00.
So really, the provisional ballot, I would think, would be handled in the same way once we were able to ascertain the validity of the voter. So, you know, this voting thing is.
I agree, but it came in saying majority, and I was like, that's way too much. I mean, it came in saying unanimous.
I mean, that was not from us. That was from the, from what Tom came in.
It came in saying unanimous, I said, that's too strong. It should be majority.
Or can we, can we actually go to the discretion of the board?
You mean, redraft it again?
If we move this in, in second?
Well, I want to, the question is, I want to see where we're going. So I'm going to move in my version with the red line that says majority. Do I have a second on that? Okay, so that's moved and seconded. Okay, Tom, we know what we're talking about.
What I was going to suggest, though, is my suggestion is to have a clear record as to what you're approving, is to take the ordinance as it was introduced, go through each section where there's a red line, and just at least get a consensus as to whether everybody agrees, or at least a majority agrees, to each red line one at a time, so that when you reach the end, you know before the vote what changes are going to get approved and what ones may not get approved. And then you can go from there.
All right, I'll go through it that way. Section D-2, this was, I don't think, this was not my red line, but it said provisional ballot shall, it said record, and it says give the individual. That was really just a word.
We're striking record, that was a typo. And I think Bruce called my attention to. I assume everybody's all right with that.
Yeah.
And then over on H, the one that I've moved in, says a provisional ballot shall be counted only if a majority of the members of the town board of supervisors agree that the vote should be counted. And then down below that, it says, but no event more than 24, more than the 24-hour period specified above, which is just to kind of make everything make sense. But the key there is an originally read unanimous vote, and now it takes a majority vote to do it.
You got ahead of me before we passed D-2, because it still didn't read right, in my opinion.
You are correct, yeah, yeah.
I mean, the election official issuing the provisional ballot shall give the individual written information advising the individual that and describing how the individual will be able to ascertain whether the vote was counted. And I guess it reads better now than it did earlier today, so. So unless somebody else sees it, has an issue with that wording, I'm okay with it now.
How badly do we need this?
Well, as I said, we're only talking maybe one.
Yeah.
Or two at the most.
I mean, we've been having elections for years.
But I think, isn't this a state request?
No, we're not required to have this.
We're not required to follow the state regulations.
Yeah, we're not required to do this.
It was just that they have become the thing now, our provisional ballots.
Yeah, a lot of places are doing it.
And so, you know, someone might come in and say, well, why can't I do a provisional ballot? And so that's why we wanted to just sort of, you know, provide this as an option. Again, to remind everyone, the problem is Frederick and Carroll Election Board's closed at 5:00, and if someone comes in after 5:00, we have no way of confirming with the election board their status. And so we turn them away. That's what we've been doing traditionally.
I think it's good to have it.
We just don't want to disenfranchise anyone from voting.
Right.
They might end up in circuit court and they have to turn the election.
I'll get back to where you were, Peter. E-4 needs a period at the end of it, not a big deal. And then G, G doesn't.
After perjury?
Yes, after perjury.
And then G reads, when voted, a provisional ballot shall be enclosed and sealed in an envelope designated provisional ballot. Makes sense up to that point. And which may have printed on it, and then my question is, is there a colon there? And is this what's supposed to be?
May have printed on it the provisional ballot application.
To be completed and signed by the individual seeking to vote under the penalty.
So it may be printed on there, you may give it to them separately.
That says that we have the application and the ballot connected. So that when, if we turn down the applicant, the potential voter, we know that ballot is not to be counted. Because if they become separated, we'd have no way of knowing that was a provisional ballot. I mean, it would be marked provisional ballot, but we wouldn't know who it was assigned to if we had more than one person.
Should then read with shall have printed on it as opposed to may?
Well, when I see printed on it, I mean, my question is, are we talking about physically printing on it provisional ballot application to be completed and signed by the individual seeking to vote under penalties of perjury? Or?
Well, we sort of have that now for absentee ballots.
Yeah, we do that now. That's physically printed on an envelope now.
Should it be in quotation?
Yeah, yeah, it's physically printed on an envelope now for absentee ballots.
Okay, I'm not going to get wrapped up in it.
Well, my question is, should it say shall and not may?
It does say shall. When voted, the provisional ballot.
It says may have printed on it. I'm thinking it shall have printed on it.
Shall have printed on it.
Shall is fine with me.
Shall be shall.
And I agree with your majority.
Yes.
But we're only talking about three people. I mean, you've got three people and an alternate on the election board. So, I mean, you need two out of three, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you might only be able to get two people together, because you're going to have to have a special meeting.
Well, we'd have to have a quorum.
Well, two's a quorum, isn't it? There's three of you.
Yeah, I think it would be.
Two's a quorum.
Two's a quorum, and you guys have one alternate, so.
So are we just taking Peter's and inserting it in? What are we thinking about?
Well, I guess we need to, I went through my change. K has been removed, you'll notice. And then on the, then back, 10-25, the A and B have been swapped there.
Actually, on that, since we're eliminating A, there's really no need to have either an A or an B.
Or a B there. Well, and they're both crossed through, so there's neither. That section will just read the way it is here.
That, I mean, it's good that we made it that far, but 10-25, I thought the wording was off when it says, subject to the provisions concerning provisional ballots set forth in article blah, blah, blah. When the right person of, when the right.
On the right of any person.
Person to vote shall be challenged. And I was wondering if that should be, is challenged by, as opposed to, it just, it reads awkward to me that, first of all, who can challenge a ballot? I mean, when I walk through the door, if somebody doesn't recognize me, can it just be anybody? I mean, who?
Technically, a citizen could bring it to our attention.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, he lives out of town.
Yeah.
It would be, you know, one of the people that's working the election who would bring it to the attention of the board that we know this person, and this isn't that person.
Yeah, okay. All right, and Peter, did you change that, did you change this paragraph and put, because at the bottom it says, unless all members of the board agree to uphold the challenge, the voter shall be permitted to vote. Did you want that majority as well?
That's 10-25.
10-25. Says the challenged voter shall be allowed to vote only if a majority of the members of the board of election supervisors agree that his or her vote should be cast. I mean, we could change that to a higher standard.
I don't think that's.
Well, but shouldn't that, that gets back, shouldn't, shouldn't that, shouldn't the two standards be the same?
Larry's looking at, Larry's looking at a different version than I'm looking at.
Okay.
Tom, what were you saying? You had me.
So how much more red is on mine?
If you're going to.
This was what was.
Okay.
So if you're going to impose a majority rules on the provisional ballot, why wouldn't the same be the same for 10-25?
Yeah, I'm just, I was working off of the copy.
He had the other copy. That was, his did read.
I had the 2-4 copy, and apparently the 2-1.
In Peter's new copy, it does say majority.
Okay, I'm cool with that.
Which is the one that I moved in and Bob seconded.
Correct.
So I will change my motion to, in G, add the word shall instead of may after the word which, and add a period after E-4. And I think that was it.
You're going to take which and may out, right? You're going to say and shall, they're putting on it.
They're going to take out the word may and put shall, which shall have printed on it. Bob, you still seconding that?
Yeah, I'm still second.
Any more discussion on that? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous.
Let's see how it goes in May.
Okay, Bruce, you don't want us to have to live with it, and that's a long day. All right, resolution?
Actually, there's some states that do increase the voting times in state elections to an hour early.
Well, you know, until, until 2000, we only voted in the afternoon. Our polls weren't.
The old charters is till 11:00.
Yeah, yeah, our polls, I remember the town polls were only open in the afternoon until after the 2002 election. After the 2002 election, they expanded the time. Yeah, it was an afternoon-only thing. All right, 2019-2, allow consumption possession of alcohol in open containers on public property. This is for the chocolate crawl. I'll let Bob move that one, kind of coming from EDC. I will second that. Any discussion on that? This is a standard thing for the chocolate crawl to allow you to walk on the street. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous. 2018-1, set penalties for leaving grass clippings and yard debris in the streets. Jason, do you want to still move that?
I will introduce 2019-1.
Okay, that's introduced. I will second that. And I know Dick wants to address that, because I know Water and Sewer had some recommendations, because we're the ones who have to deal with this.
Dick Swanson, Water and Sewer. If you go to page 4 or 5D down there, the addition, it says, it ends the sentence within at least 24 hours. The Water and Sewer Commission.
The Water and Sewer Commission recommends dramatically reducing that time. We recommend it four hours. And the reason for that is that if a property owner puts debris, grass clippings, leaves, whatever it is, on the sidewalks in the street, and in that 24 hours, you could have a thunderstorm or rainstorm or windstorm or something. And that would defeat the purpose of having this ordinance, because that will drive those grass clippings into the sewer system and potentially can clog it. So we think it should be a short period of time. There's no reason why it should be 24 hours. And also, this is a dramatic rewrite and structure from the original. And the Water and Sewer Commission did talk about, where you were talking about haulers and stuff.
Right.
My quick look through here is that's been taken out. There's no mention of who would do hauling when you have a pickup.
Those were in the associated sections, which are referenced, but we're not dealing with that at the moment.
Right. So the only, the only real recommendation, what you have here, is go from 24 to four hours.
And that came largely with the support, backing, recommendation of Mark Moxley, who dealt with this problem for years. And I do know that we have people in town, and Brian's still back there, he probably, we have people in town who will purposely blow their junk in the streets, am I correct? And we will repeatedly tell them not to? Yeah, so there are people who do that all the time. The four hours allows a company to come in who's doing yard sweeping. They can blow it in the street, they come through with their truck, they haul it and they take it away. But there's people out there who they'll say, oh, a thunderstorm's coming, they'll blow it in the street, it ends up in the storm water management ponds, which is why Water and Sewer looked at this, because we're dealing with the storm water management ponds and the storm drains, and it's a disaster. And there are people who, I mean, I can tell people I know in town who that's what they do, year after year after year. And, you know, you go out there and you talk to them about it, and you talk to them about it, and they just constantly blow all their leaves in the street.
Just from a practical enforcement issue, I totally agree with you, four hours. Chances are, we're not going to get out there for 48 hours anyway, especially if it's on a Saturday, so.
But there are people we know do it.
I do, I would do four, four hours.
There are people we know do it, so.
Any question from Tom, would it be a municipal infraction? It's normal municipal infraction, follow that course.
Right, so each of these sections already have other sections that you don't have to amend to make all this a municipal infraction and impose certain fines.
Thank you.
So Water and Sewer's recommendation, was that 24 become four?
Sounds good.
Do you want to amend your motion to tend it with four? And I will second that.
New change, four hours.
So next month's version, the one that's actually going forward, says four and not 24, so we'll just cross out the two. I think, because it probably doesn't have it, yeah, it says 20, so we just cross out the two in section eighty-five dash five, and that's what we'll have next month.
So in D, also in.
Twenty-four there, is it twenty-four in there twice?
On page four or five, in subsection D.
Oh, indeed, it says twenty-four as well, okay. And that came from the town professionals, like they wanted a shorter time.
Sounds good.
So that's what we'll have next month, okay. Ordinance. Okay, no one finished business. All right, council approval budget for the dump truck, that's what Brian's here for, is here for. This was kind of put together as an emergency Brian is able to get, I think it's a demonstrator truck, right? That's perfectly what we want, that's within, it's within what we had budgeted, and we can get it like immediately. So basically, we're just approving the purchase, which is coming from, is it, which one? Is it Western?
Rivers Trucks, is that the one?
Bids are, okay, it's the international, I saw Western start, it's the international bid. So we're going to approve the international bid. I will move, we approve the international bid at 152-741, one place it says seven, seven four, the other place it says seven four four. It says seven seven four twice, so I'll go with that one.
I'll go with the higher one as well.
Yeah, yeah, so if you go, second my motion on that?
I'll second the seven seven four.
Yeah, any, any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you. There you go, Brian, thanks. That was kind of a no-brainer. And he said we wouldn't get a truck for quite a while, but these guys had a demonstrator, which was already within what we were budgeting. All right, Dick's here for the flushables presentation. Oh, yeah. What you can flush and what you can't.
I know everybody's been waiting for this one. Two, three years ago, the Water and Sewer Commission made a short presentation on flushables and the problems with those. And this is kind of an update because of the wisdom of, this comes from the WRCC, which is a county group that Mount Arrie's a member of, suggests that every couple of years, you bring this up again, because people sometimes lapse back into bad habits. So with that, if we could get the lights.
There we go, I see it. Respect your sewer, and it will respect you. We should have had all the people from, from Dorsey, Dan State for this.
If you, next slide, please. Before we get into the.
Who's our controller? Next slide. Okay, there we go.
Just a refresher of who's responsible for what. The sewer line down the streets are the responsibility of the town. It is the responsibility of the property owner from the hookup all the way into the property. And that's important, because as I go on and talk about a few things, if this part has a sewer blockage, it is your responsibility financially. And I'll talk about your responsibility on that part. So next slide, just to tell you what the law says, that you may not discharge anything into the sewer system that, and I love this, is not amenable to the treatment, whoops, or city law, or reduction by the sewer system. In other words, if you put it in the sewer system and it doesn't degenerate immediately, you're in violation technically of the law. Next slide. And we added this a couple of years ago, when we changed the law, to say that we realized there was really no penalty for this in the code, other than a $50 fine. Also, since this could be very, very expensive to the town, and you caused a sewer blockage in the town sewer system, you could be held liable for the cost of repairing that and the damages done to other people's property on that backup. So there's a lot of liability that goes along with how you treat your sewer system.
And we had a high-dollar one with, with the grease backup that someone caused a few years back, damaged another business, and tremendous dollars.
You're talking big bucks. Next slide. Okay, Patty Potty, who, by the way, is.
Happy birthday, Patty.
Is a, is a campaign by the state of Texas.
We didn't make this up, Patty.
Yeah, we didn't make this up.
If it said Peter, I would have been happy with it, Tim.
To make people aware of a number of different things that relate to water and sewer and storm water management, and this just happened to be one of them. But this is their list of a lot of things, it just gives the surface of what type of things do get put flushed down the toilet and do not belong in the system, because they can cause problems.
This is for our system as well, though, Dick, even though they developed it, these are things we should not be flushing.
Yes, we should not put these in our system.
Yes, these, these apply to our system. So we're talking about makeup, bandages, all-purpose cleaners, women's hygiene, kitty litter, you read through here.
There should almost be a disclaimer to say, not to interrupt you, to say that this is just a limited list, and there are other things that apply.
Yeah, you can come up with other things.
You could, you could, you could just add and add and add and add to this list.
No cats, dogs, fish, yes. No small animals, yeah.
And if you go to the next slide. And this is where we got to where we originally started a couple of years ago, when, when the issue about flushables. Flushables, you go to the store, you look at something, there's kitty litter, there's, there's diapers, there's wipes, and the, and the package very nicely says on it, flushable. Okay, it's flushable. You put it in the toilet, flush it, it goes somewhere. Where's it go? It goes in the sewer system. What happens to it in the sewer system? It does not biodegrade for a long, long time, and therefore, it can create a clog. And therefore, it may be flushable, but it doesn't belong in the system.
Yeah, there are things that they call flushable now that are not flushable by any standard definition. It's not just our system can't handle it, nothing handles it, it's not flushable.
And you may be curious to say, this, this has been going on for a couple of years. I was here two years ago or three years ago talking about the same thing, why hasn't anything happened? What, the problem is, Washington DC passed a law about flushables, and basically, I believe banned them. They were taken to court by one of the manufacturers. The manufacturer won the case against the city based on the fact that the term flushable isn't well-defined, and therefore violates the First Amendment, the company's right to freedom of speech, and put that on the packaging. Because that court decision, the state of Maryland withdrew its proposed flushable law, a number of other states and jurisdictions did. It's on appeal, and I don't know what the status is. So what we have is a court battle over the term flushable.
Need to come up with a legal definition of what is flushable, and then.
So, but the bottom line is, as far as you and I should be concerned, we're talking about our sewer system from the house to the sewer line, to the sewer line, to wastewater treatment plant, and out the back door. And we don't want to contribute to the possibility of clogging that system, both because if it happens in a, between your house and the street, it's your problem, that's expensive, that's a crisis, if you've ever had it happen, where suddenly your sewer is backing up in your house, and because of the liability of what you could do to the town's system. So bottom line is, flushables may be flushable, but don't. I'd also got to say, when we did this a couple of years ago, the big terms in those days were fog, fats, oils, and grease. Three things you do not put down your sink or through your garbage disposal, fats, oil, and grease. Because they'll, they'll create the binding in the pipes that'll collect all the other stuff you're putting down there, and they're going to enhance the probability that you're going to create a problem. So next slide, please. And we also mentioned a couple of years ago, and it's true today, and somebody who happens to be in this room happened to say, this is the worst appliance ever invented. It's a garbage disposal. You grind all that stuff up and it goes down the drain, but you know what? It still is what it is, and it still can clog the sewer. And when you're talking about what you grind up, they're saying, oh, well, you know, I just put, you know, some vegetables, peelings, banana peels, whatever, you actually throw them down there, turn on my garbage disposal. The fibrous types of vegetables, it's, they are a particular problem, because they don't grind up right. And when they get into the sewer system, they're, they can clog it regardless of whether you just stuffed it down there or you ground it up. Don't do that, all right? Be mindful that your garbage disposal is not necessarily your friend. All right. Next slide?
That's it.
Oh, that's it, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, there we are. Bottom line is, if you treat your sewer system appropriately, consciously think about what you're putting in there, be it washing down the drain, flushing down the toilet or whatever, that you are doing a service to the community by being conscious of that, and you're certainly reducing the risk that you're going to have a problem with your own sewer line. So with that, I thank you very much.
Thanks, Dick. Dick, can I, real quick, you have a great presentation, that serves as round of applause. Thank you. Dick, real quick, so we can post this on the town website, I'm going to ask Tom's advice. I learned something here today, because I tell you, I'll put any kind of food-related thing down my garbage disposal, banana, not really banana peels, I think for some reason I don't do it, but everything else. Can you come up with a little list of what you can't, so we can edit this? And if we were to post this entire thing, I'm going to look at Gina, on the town website, would you suggest maybe this list? And Tom, should we remove Patty's Potties and just say Town of Mount Arrie's do not flush? I don't want to end up in a lawsuit that we're depicting.
Yeah, I don't know that's trademarked or.
I did look online, and I didn't see any trademark, and I didn't see it was by a state government, so, and usually that was.
The state of Texas put this out.
And they disseminated it for, mostly for their counties and municipalities.
I'm just concerned about depicting a woman as being the one that's doing it. I'm just.
Looks like a Texan.
All right, no, seriously.
That's fine. What I could do is, is take that out of there, kind of put a list like that, and then just say, this list is representative, because.
Okay, if you could do that, and maybe add for the garbage disposal, because I really don't know, and I've learned something, then if Gina could put the whole package online, but highlight the one page, because I think that is, would that be your bang page? Is that the page you want to see?
Yeah.
And then we'll put the whole package for people to read, but this is important work.
It's really, it's really that page, flushables and garbage disposal. That's really the bottom line.
Maybe if you work with Gina and do some edits, and we could do a little promotional campaign, because this is very important, and you did a good job.
Because I mean, when it says garbage disposal's not a garbage disposal, that sort of implies that we shouldn't use it at all, but if you could sort of, you know, break down.
Because I don't know what the heck to do now.
Yeah, so now I'm sort of confused, because I am very careful of what I put down.
By the way, what interesting is, and I assume it's true Carroll County, you are not allowed to have a garbage disposal in a residence that is hooked up to a septic system.
Oh, yeah, no, I've known that.
And, and, I mean, think about it, why?
Because the stuff never goes away?
Because the stuff never goes away.
Yeah, try.
Thanks, Dick.
Thanks.
All right. Town of Mount Arrie's standards, specifications, and details for construction update for council approval. Barney, you gave us this huge packet of all these little rules, and you gave us the backup packet, the old one for comparison. I assume a vote is actually needed on this to make this.
Yes.
Should this, is this, is this something that should be introduced and voted on next month to our comment? Tom, what do you think?
I don't know how long you all had it. You know, it certainly makes sense, I would, but that's really, to Barney.
This was in the case of planning commission the other night, now is this something that we're going to look through and make a recommendation?
I would think that would be the proper.
Okay, then, then, then maybe we should just hold on this until we get, hear from planning on it.
Sounds good.
That's all right. That sounds, that sounds like a plan. All right, Brittany Manor, PWA, for approval.
Okay, so as you all may know, and probably do know, the development, or the property that makes up the development is being transferred to a new developer, Kay Hovnanian Homes of Maryland LLC. The way that this is going to be sequenced, and Mr. Thompson can correct me if I'm wrong or fill in some of the details, so I don't mess this up, but basically, the, the current owner, Doc Foal, Twin Arch Associates, will put on the plat and record it, will initially sign and be obligated under the Public Works Agreement initially. The new developer, however, will be putting up the security, and in very quick succession, the sale will occur such that the documents will be recorded. And one of those documents will be an assumption by the new developer of the obligations under this PWA, as well as a release of Doc Foal and the Twin Arch Associates Limited Partnership from their obligations under this Public Works Agreement. So you have a substitution, basically, so that you'll have ultimately, the same developer who's putting up the security will be bound under the Public Works Agreement. And that's why you have some extra terms in here describing that.
Other than that oddity, this is a standard PWA.
It's fairly standard, that's right.
I will, I will move, we accept the PWA, I got a second? Patty's seconding, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 So it's actually the same, the same everything, except for a different name?
It's just going to, right.
Okay.
And that's a, Kay Hovnanian, I mean, they're all over the place.
Yeah.
Okay, we had council commissioner liaison voting discussion on here. I wasn't sure whether we wanted to bring that up, or whether it will go until next month.
Well, where, where it stands, okay, is Tom Spence. Well, where it stands, okay, is Tom spent so much time on the other issues that we've decided to hold it off until March. He and I are going to work on this this month for introduction in March.
Okay, Zed?
Yeah, I would like to add in there, I mean, we've been doing this for about a half a year now, that's what we're working our way up to.
February was when it got introduced last year.
Yes. The, the one thing that I would lean toward is, I've kind of gone toward this tiebreaker or quorum maker type of liaison is something that I would be agreeable to. So I don't know what you're working toward, but as far as a compromise goes, from, from what I brought up last month, I would be agreeable to, to a liaison across the board, all of us serving as tiebreakers or quorum makers.
I guess we'll see what Bob comes up with.
Yeah, and I've sort of discussed that with Peter and Jason and, you know...
I haven't seen anything. We've talked about it, but we'll see what he comes up with.
Okay.
That's right.
Recommendation for, okay, recommendation for council approval of design, build, reconfiguration of the council room, Barney Quinn. Barney gave us this, it looked kind of interesting. Hard to see how well it fits across the space here.
Yeah, how many people consider the table?
So, these chairs are 28 inches wide, so we allowed enough space for 30 inches. So we said 17 and a half feet minimum distance.
And you save space by basically pushing these tables out there.
Yeah, basically.
But that's going to shrink the audience, isn't it?
This would have to slide forward, that would slide forward and...
But this would move back.
Podium wouldn't be there anymore.
Yeah, this would move back.
Right, so that would be better. How many people could you fit?
Patty raised a good question, because we tend to think about just the commission of this, which is what, what is there, seven of us? And, but you have some commission members, so...
Well, but they, but they can't sit here either.
So seven comfortably...
No, no, they were trying to fix it, though.
No, I'm just saying, when the commissions have their meetings, is there anybody that has more than seven people?
It's planning has...
Planning has an alternate.
Do you have nine?
Nine and an alternate.
Yeah, and they always sit in the audience. They always sit and pull chairs up.
So it may not be reasonable to accommodate all the commissions, but if we can, Patty raised a very good point, let's try to think beyond our seating needs and that of the commissions, if we can.
In other words, maximize the seats.
Maximize it as much as we can. And I don't know if that, if we were looking for that intent or if we were just trying to get seven. Thank you.
I thought getting seven was going to be hard.
Yeah.
I mean, just looking at the width of the room, getting seven was going to be tough.
You can fit, you can fit eight there, but seven comfortably.
Okay, so is seven...
What doesn't show the walls, you can almost just say, I don't know what fire code is, and it probably, it's only like two foot.
Well, you need about three feet on each side.
No, you don't need three foot on each side. Why do you need three foot?
You need it on one side at least.
Not for DC fire code, you don't.
You're going to have to do with handicap, ADA codes.
Maybe ADA, you might count me in.
ADA codes, you're going to need it.
Okay.
Barney's not one of them.
Well, as long as you could fit seven, I mean, seven is usually the number...
That's the minimum.
For, that's a minimum.
Right.
For us, at least.
Yes.
But most of the commissions are...
You only need three foot on one side if it's ADA, right?
I'm just saying...
Although you'd be, or you would be off-center then.
True. You'd be off-center, right.
Can I just ask why we're even doing this? Because this is a lot of money for...
Because I'm tired of sitting on Peter's elbow.
I would say, I mean, we budgeted $120,000 and is this bid actually coming in at $49,000?
Yeah, so, so there's two parts to it. One is, is the tables, the second part is all the AV equipment.
Speakers.
Yeah, but this part does all need to be redone.
Right.
So the $49,000 is just for the podiums and the table, the desk?
And then all the electronics is going to be redone.
And that's out for bid currently, which will come one of the upcoming meetings.
And this is great for the flat iron building. This was designed for the flat iron building with the wedge.
Well, and it was a good...
It's not real functional here. The people with the most paperwork have the less room.
That's exactly right.
You have your town attorney, the mayor, and the council president all at a pinch point.
Peter's got a little table over there.
Well, we asked for these side tables because we can't put our paperwork in.
Well, with this design too, then we're facing the people better and also facing the cameras better.
Yes, right. It is true.
And it'll open up the presentation area. It'll open up for audiences.
Yeah, we have a lot of dead table space here that we can't utilize.
Yeah, that's, yeah, a lot of wasted space.
Yeah.
So I, so I can understand the need for it. And the electronics are at the end of their lifespan. I mean, a lot of this stuff is broken, really. It's just kind of being held together. So that, that needs to get done and the idea is to get a table as part of that and then wire all the new stuff into the new table. Of course, I'm not sure where we're going to end up storing all the emergency food packs that are stored under here.
Yeah, we'll move them.
We'll find, we'll find a spot.
All right.
Well, is 49, so $49,000 covers the table, the furniture side of all this. None of the electronics of it.
Yeah, and I feel comfortable that we would be well within our budget with, with the rest of it.
Is there a ballpark on what the electronics might add up to?
I'm going, I'm going to say no more than 50, but it might be more like 30 to 40,000.
All right, all right, so we're not...
I'm pushing for the huge four-screen, 4K projector with the surround sound system and...
So Barney, if we did have an opportunity to allow more seating, should we budget a little bit more to allow the flexibility? Because this bid is based on what you have. If we want to try to go a little wider, as the council member Patty suggested and I agree with...
How close is this? Is this, I mean...
If we can go wider...
Well, I'm just looking at our seven chairs. I mean, if we were to put our seven chairs across here, we're going to...
Well, it's going to be a wedge, remember that. It's more...
Not much.
Boom, boom. So I would think you can get more than seven.
Not a lot of a curb to it.
I don't, all's I'm saying, and we don't have to do the math here and measure it out now, but perhaps we should budget an extra $5,000 in case you can add a seat or two.
Right.
As I was suggesting to the council.
And if the chairs aren't quite as big, you certainly could do that easily. Like, if they were more like these chairs, you certainly could do that.
I would just ask that we up the number a little bit, if, give us the flexibility to go a little larger to accommodate some of the other commissions. If we're going to do it right, let's not try to save a few bucks and have somebody...
Well, if that's the case, then you would need to come back next month with a new bid package.
Can he just, we a bit, we approve, what did you ask for, 51?
Again, I think that the...
49, why don't you...
I think that 17 feet is going to be plenty big for even eight people.
I would like to see the flexibility. It's up to the town council and I'd like to see approval of 55, just to give us the flexibility so we don't have to come back.
It's a total package. It's a total of 120, so it's only using a portion of that.
Exactly, I know, I know, but, but we still have to come back to you for every, everything over 30,000. So if you, if you prove 49, that's all we can spend.
Right, right.
Even though it's within the total budget, that's all we can spend if you approve 49. So I'm asking for the flexibility of 55.
If we do go over, I mean, Barney would come back and say...
Yeah, well, you could do that, but you'd have to come back or we could keep the process rolling. It's not a big deal either way, just, it's more expedient to say 55.
Do we know how far it is across here?
Yeah, again, it's, it's six feet more than what we said, the minimum length of the table.
Again, I'm opposed to engineering it right now to meet...
The table shows a 17 five.
So it's about 23.
The table's 17 five and it's 23 feet.
You're engineering it at, this is not the place.
We already, we already engineered it. That's why we specified the minimum width of the table and that's what they would, but, but we can, if you add a little action, we can see if they can go a little bit wider.
Silly to box yourselves in when you're spending that much money.
Has it even been moved in yet? Is this...
Well, I'll move, we accept Barney's bid and we'll go from there. Do I have a second on it? Got a second on it? Okay, discussion.
Discussion has occurred.
Yeah, I know, but we technically have...
Just give us the flexibility to go to 55. If we can add seats, is what I'm asking for.
Are we interested in adding more?
Well, we have to go, we'd have to go back to the guys and ask them to design a new structure, right?
Well, I mean, it's, again, it's just a small change to their drawing, I would think. We'll verify code and all that.
Right, well, the question is, do, how much money do we need if we're going to go?
I, I think 10% contingency is great, that'd be 5,000, say.
Okay, so 54,000?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll amend my motion to give Barney $54,000 for this. Got a second on that?
Second.
Second for Patty, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. See what you can come up with. And Barney, you know, something that I did when we were building out is, I actually took tape and taped out what we were doing on the floor, so we were all able to basically walk in it and see if we thought it actually worked.
Right.
And some things we were doing, we decided didn't work and we reconfigured things.
Good idea.
So it gave us, it gave, gave us a, a real feel for what was there, so, you know, pull on this table and take masking tape and mask out what it is, get a look at it. To me, that's real helpful. Okay, moving on to commission reports.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Happy New Year to the Town of Mount Aries. Together, we've weathered a lot through this past year. We've come through as an even stronger community.
Is that last year?
We went through...
You said Happy New Year.
Well, it's because I didn't have a January one.
Okay.
Tornado illnesses for many of our people in our community. We celebrated our first anniversary of our police force and we had a special election. So we had a lot happen last year. The town council staff, we all look forward to an even greater 2019. As far as winter weather, we remind people that they are responsible for clearing their sidewalks within 24 hours of the snowfall. This helps keeps, this helps keeps our pedestrian safe and allows our children to get to the bus stops. Also, we'd like to thank the people that are already doing that. If you could take a little extra effort and clear the hydrants, the fire plugs, that's not only going to save your neighbor's house in event of a fire, it'll save our firefighters' precious time from trying to locate fire hydrants. We do have the poles on them now, which is good. Town safety, this time of the year, everybody's thinking about joining a fitness program, losing some weight, getting out there on the streets and jogging. Please be extra careful and I'd like to remind the joggers to wear reflective clothing so that they are also safe. The budget process is beginning and understanding it. Each year, the mayor, after working with the staff, presents a draft budget to the town council and that's a starting point. And it goes on from there, it's in my, my report. Once it's adopted, the budget comes back to the mayor for implementation. What's happening around town, a lot of times we see properties, we're wondering, what the heck's going on? Well, I'd like to put it in the mayor's report so we don't get 50 questions and you all don't get 50 questions. We're looking at home goods, I think John's been very good about talking to them. Their website says March 1st and that's consistent with what John's hearing, March 2019, your home goods will be coming back.
Oh, good.
I know, so many people missed that. 1010 South Main Street is looking at revitalizing that area with some residential development and they are currently working at the staff process. The downtown master plan, it's in its final edit phase, will be presented to the planning commission at their February meeting. Depending on the changes and what studies we need, it'll come back to the town council in March or April. Remember, this study will look at several things, the flat iron building, the Center Street corridor, parking, utility infrastructure, and a full marketing study, among other items. Pickle, I'm going to leave that for Larry because he'll talk about that, but this will go in my written report. I'm not going to say anything about that one. The If I Were Mayor contest is kicking off again and this year's theme is Together We Can, which was a theme for one of our former mayors. Downtown events, Chocolate Crawl, you've heard that, Bob, I'll let you hit that, but y'all don't have a mayor's report, so I'll save that for that. To let everybody know that our town council meetings are on the first Monday of every month at 7:30 and they are at 1010 South Main. If you'd like to attend, they're also televised on Channel 23 unless there's a holiday. If you look in the mayor's report, you'll see there's some volunteer opportunities and a website you can visit. And the mayor's community forums will resume on March 2nd, 10:30 to 12:00. I'll be in Mac the Caboose, but I'll probably look at other places to go to encourage people to pop in there. Also, I'd like...
Count Council meetings are not at 1010 South Main?
Did I say that?
Yeah.
I'm glad you slowed me down. We will no longer be holding...
There's a vacant lot up at 1010 South Main. If you go up there, somebody about to edit my report.
That's the second, that's okay. February was spelled wrong and Gina corrected it over the weekend. We have to get that edit, please check that edit, because I was reading from the, we will not be holding them there. Oh, did I say 1010? It's actually written right, I read it wrong. It's, it's at 110 South Main. It's, we're fine, okay? This is kind of interesting. We're, we're coming up on a new town master plan and it's been about 13 years, is that 13 years since we've had a survey? So tonight, I'm announcing the reformation of the Growth Development Task Force that I had the honor of, were you on that task force with me?
No.
You weren't? Okay. I had the honor of chairing that task force back in 2006 and in 2007, we produced a town survey that gave voice to the community. We had a response rate of 43%.
I can't believe the amount of work you put into that. You guys, I'm talking about a hard-working group, I got to say.
And what's great about that, we already have a format to go by. I've actually have all the newspaper clippings from that and I also have a lessons learned item to turn over to the, to the new task force. So that will be formed and presented to the town council next month. I'm going to do something a little differently with this task force than what's done under former Mayor Johnson. I'm going to ask each council member to give me two people that they'd like to see on that commission. And from that, I'm going to form the task force. So I'm going to let you all be part of this and helping to choose some of the people that are going to sit on that survey. Again, with the guideline we have to go by, it ought to make it much easier, but there's new issues in town and there's going to be new issues with the master plan, so it's time, we should do a survey before every master plan. I'm sure Bill Butts is out there shaking his head. No, yeah, 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 yeah. I just hope you tell everybody about your Rob Haverstein story. I'm going to leave it like that. And that concludes my mayor's report, but I want you to say that story you told me. And for reappointments, I'd like to recommend Mark Mignona. Did I say it right?
Yes.
Yes! To the Parks, the Board of Parks and Recs, and Lucy Regal to Streets and Roads. Is she not already on there? Okay, I'd like to make that...
I will move, we accept the mayor's recommendations. Second from Bob, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
So council members, get back to me within the month, two of your recommendations. Take one of them.
All right, beautification, Parks and Rec.
All right. Parks Board, we end up having to cancel our last meeting due to, due to the weather, so this will be pretty quick. Mayor said we're getting pickleball and that is true. They're going to be lining up the, relining the tennis courts at Village Gate, so that's, that's how we're going to get pickleball into Mount Aries. We'll see how it goes and, and maybe we grow it from there. Tomorrow morning, meeting with some people over at the skate park pad to talk about what would fit in that area. Right now, top on the list is the possibility of an inclusive ADA-compatible playground. I'll make it quick. The next meeting is February 21st at 7:00 PM, so please show up if you're interested in that. And that'll do it for there. Beautification, January meeting was not held, but February meeting will be February nineteenth at seven P.M. If you want to come and see the hardest-working physical commission in the town, so.
Beautification.
Historical Society Cookbook is on sale at the museum, so if you're interested in the cookbook. Last month, I forgot to mention the Jell-O mold that Patty put in there. It's awesome. Bingo is February twenty-third. That's a big fundraiser for, for the Historical Society. So February twenty-third at the Carnival Grounds, please come out. They're, they're doing real good in sponsorships. And the Southwest Airlines raffle is still available. Ten bucks for a raffle ticket. They could get you two round-trip tickets on Southwest Airlines to domestic locations. Thank you.
Larry, quick question. When are, probably Gina, you, when are the survey results gonna come out?
The survey was ended today, correct, and she's tabulating the results, and they should be available at the February meeting, correct?
And just a procedural note, the Parks Board reviews these things and makes recommendations, but before we change a usage of a town facility or something like that, I do want the town council to weigh in to see if there's any objections. So it's really a recommendation. We don't change.
Right, especially if there's any money going into it.
Well, definitely if there's any money, but just in general, it's just a good, just a good practice, and procedurally, just want everybody to remember that. Thank you.
Fair enough.
All right, EDC Planning, Bob.
Okay, Planning Commission meeting was on January the twenty-eighth. We approved three new menu boards for McDonald's. They're a little different. The Carroll County Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan was reviewed. There was a rezoning request by DMS Development LLC for a five-acre lot at Route twenty-seven and westbound I-70 ramp. So that's where the, the sign, the...
The Wawa.
Yeah.
Okay. Across McDonald's.
The lot is currently zoned residential existing, and DMS says it's a mistake, and it might be. You know, they have two ways to approach that, either, and one of them is if we've made an error. So they're trying to get us to change it, to change the...
If we would make that determination, that would be one of those where we're serving in our judicial capacity.
Correct.
So we don't want to have any contact with anybody from...
DMS.
From them, yeah.
Yeah, DMS Development LLC. The lot is currently zoned, our residential existing, and DMS says it should be CC. They want to build a Wawa using two-point-seven acres of the five-acre lot total. McCampy to protect McKenzie from the weather was introduced to Planning Commission. The Engineering Department introduced updated standards and specification details for construction. We worked on the sign ordinance, and our next member, our next meeting will be February twenty-fifth at seven o'clock in Town Hall. For economic development, the Hipsley Collective was a huge success. This is a collaborative effort that may be, may have potential to be used every year. Most thought the concept was great, but needs to be planned much earlier in the year. So it wasn't real clear where the money that the town contributed was going to, and several of the EDC members said they'd like to have, you know, things a little more clear next time. We discussed...
Bob, I'll send you can pass this on. I got some complaints from businesses on Main Street as to why is the town funding this business?
Right.
And not, you know, my business.
Right.
So, you know, so, not me, but I, you know, because I don't do it.
The whole thing came to us. We had about it. We had an hour to consider it, and that was it.
So...
Just to be clear, the contribution of the town was three thousand dollars.
Yeah, three thousand.
It was for an incubator business setup, and it also removed a vacant storefront from, from the town.
Right, and Ma'ams donated three thousand dollars also.
Yeah, there's matching funds.
Okay. We discussed next year's budget and, and the budget process. We're trying to teach EDC about how the budget works. The back acre circle parking issues and the possible effect on future business. EDC asks that we be very careful about placing parking restrictions on, parking restrictions on future businesses. We have, we're developing a business-friendly attitude here in town. We'd like to maintain that. Therefore, working together on these issues is critical, and I think that's what everybody that discussed this tonight was saying. You know, we just need everybody to get together and work together on it, and, you know, see, see what we can do without creating a whole bunch of rules and regulations about parking in that area. Let's see, next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday. Now, this is EDC. Usually meets on Wednesday. They're gonna meet on Tuesday, February the twenty-sixth, right here at Town Hall, seven o'clock. For some reason, they're, I can't remember what Donna Marie is doing on, oh, we have a, we have a, something in Sykesville that we'll be going to. So, and that'll be on Wednesday night, so she won't try to get to meeting in before. We now have an empty building steering committee. We're, we're trying to put together a tour sometime in the springtime where we can kind of highlight these businesses that we, or these buildings that we have open, and, you know, maybe get them leased and rented and all that kind of stuff. It's gonna involve building owners. We have a tentative meeting on February the twentieth at ten A.M. at Town Hall. Melissa and, and Donna Marie and Pam from, from...
Ma'ams.
Ma'ams will be working on that. And I, once again, devoting liaisons time and hour, working on ordinance that reflects the outcome of last month's decision on the issue with all the questions associated with the Dorsey Town Annexation and sign ordinance. We thought that it might be prudent to devote our time and energy on these issues, so we'll be introducing something in March. The downtown master plan will be presented by Design Collective at our next Planning Commission meeting and presented to the town council after they develop a recommendation. And I think we've got copies for everybody here tonight. This is the only reason that my package is bigger than yours, because I brought mine along.
Nice.
Well, there we go. I can get that package. Do you have one?
Yeah, we have three.
So we got one. Joe was making them up the other day. Thanks, Joe.
So that's my report.
All right, thanks, Bob. Okay, sanitation, recycling, Jason.
Thank you. There's going to be some new recycling guidelines. As, as many of you may have heard or have not heard, China is restricting some purchasing of some of the recyclable materials that we have going into our recycling containers. One of the big ones now is glass, and a lot of counties have started to move away from recycling glass, and that will eventually affect our town. So we're gonna get a better understanding, and we're gonna have a few commission members head over to the recycling centers to figure out exactly what those needs are and, and how to better serve our town. We're gonna be creating a new recycling video to match those new guidelines. And my next meeting, I will have all of the updates for the pickup dates for bulk pickup and battery recycling and those types of things. My next meeting is the Sustainable Mount Airy Commission meeting, and that is February twentieth at seven P.M. here at Town Hall.
Streets and Roads, Patty.
Okay, that would be me. Well, I think we've heard a lot about what's happening at Back, I can't say it, Back Acre Circle.
Could you paraphrase?
So, but just to let you know that we've been dealing with this, ever since, I have been the liaison for Streets and Roads. It has been a major, major issue. Lighting has been evaluated, and it's appropriate. The road study is being addressed for possible restriping to allow parking on one side. The no U-turns have been installed. The Mount Airy Police Department has been, you know, not giving tickets per se for the U-turns, but for people speeding, they will give tickets. But they are trying to educate the, the people in that area, as well as the business owner. She's trying to educate her patrons a little bit better, too. Blinking lights have been installed in front of the drop-off areas to alert drivers. The road has been measured. It is thirty-six feet wide. We are working with both the residents and the businesses to try to accommodate a better traffic pattern. The town administrator did send a letter to the business owner stating that what has been done in the past and what will be done in the future if we don't see any, you know, anything that's helping the, to resolve the issue. Frank Dirt Spa is looking into shared parking with the building directly behind where Center Stage is located, and will, you know, continue to have the police presence there. So I'm not going to get into anything more about that. I think you've heard. But it is a very, you know, pressing issue, and we are working very diligently on that. One thing I would like to say, I would like to give a shout-out to Gina. You know, as many of you have probably seen on our website, Gina has put an area on the website for each of the commissions that she can actually click on a square, which will take you to a forum. And so it's really been very helpful for the Streets and Roads, because I cannot tell you how many people have actually given us, you know, concerns about our streets and roads. So it's really helpful, because now we have it documented, and then I talked to Gina, because I wanted to make sure that people were going to be given information as to, yes, this is received, and we will begin working on it, which she did. So it's really, I really appreciate that, Gina. She's done a lot for our website, and it's, it's really been very valuable. The other thing is, so we do have a lot of, the other thing that we did is, we hadn't had... We hadn't had minutes posted on the website for quite a few meetings. So our new chairperson, Jennifer Smith, went through all the old, all the old minutes, and then she put down everything that we thought we should try to address. We went through them. Some of them, we, we closed those action items, but we have quite a few action items, and many of them are with the State Highway Administration. So I'm working with Barney, and we're working with a few other people just to see, to make sure that we have communicated these concerns to the State Highway Department so that they will be, you know, closed. And then, let's see. So that's there. The next meeting is going to be March fifth of two thousand nineteen, so that will be great. Okay, now, so the mayor wanted me to reiterate a little story that I had told him. As you know, yesterday was probably the most boring Super Bowl that we had, but there was one piece of exciting news. We had a hometown football player by the name of Rob Heavenstein, and Rob graduated from Linganor in two thousand and ten, and he's just an outstanding, a standing person. He, you know, had like a four-point-three GPA when he was at Linganor, and he was, he never started football until he was actually a freshman at high school, because he was a big kid. And the way that the, the Linganor side of it at that time did it, if you were big, they held it against you. So his dad wouldn't let him play football until freshman. So it's really quite a great story, and like I said, he's just a great, it's a great family, a great, a great kid. But there's a funny story. My son was two years younger than Rob, and they played lacrosse together when they were in middle school. And my son was in sixth grade, and Rob was in eighth grade, and, you know, he was a force. I mean, he was, at that point, he was probably six-five, and my son was about five-ten, and my son was the biggest kid on the JV lacrosse. So after they had practice one day, the coaches said, we're gonna have a scrimmage between the sixth graders and the seventh and eighth graders. So, you know, my son was the biggest kid on his team, so of course, the coaches said, you're gonna be up against Rob. And so my son was all excited, because he was, you know, going up against the giant. And he said, watch, Mom, I'm gonna take him down. I said, okay. So, you know, my husband and I were on the sideline. We're watching him, and, and they're playing, and all of a sudden, you see Rob coming in, and my son is running, and he thinks he's gonna take the Rob down, and he hit a brick wall, and he went flying through the air, and after we found out he was okay, everybody just started laughing, and after that, he said, I'm never taking Rob again.
And that guy went pro.
And he, now, so he can say that he tried to take down the NFL player, and he lost.
Great story.
Thanks, Patty. Okay. Is that it? You're done, Patty?
I'm done.
Okay.
I'm done.
Water and Sewer, we have not met actually in a while, because we had our January meeting canceled. We will meet Wednesday in this room at seven o'clock. Monica?
Okay, and see, staff is working with a company called CGI Communications to develop four promotional videos for the town. They've been reaching out to local businesses as sponsors to cover the cost of the production. It's free, it's free to the town. The videos will be featured on the town's website. The topics include welcome, quality of life, recreation of parks, and business and industry. The filming will occur in, in June, and the videos will be produced soon after that. Stormwater pond updates. The Twin Ridge ponds that we originally, I think, had estimated to be about six-hundred thousand dollars, that is now up to a million dollars for the renovation of that project, so that needs to be budgeted for this year. We're also working on a longer-range Frederick County facility for our next permit period. That is estimated at about six-hundred thousand dollars for right now. And then the Mary Dell Gardens pond, that was actually costing about nine-hundred thousand dollars, that's gonna be completed around March. So we did get a big grant for that. The county got a grant from the Department of Natural Resources for the cost of that.
You're so explicit in seeing what we have to do and what we don't have to do, right?
So far, you know, it's all under our have-to-do, because we're under the county's Phase One permit, so.
And the county will not help us at all, I mean?
Well, we cost share on the Carroll side, but on the Frederick County side, it's all on us.
Weren't they, is Carroll helping us with doing engineering and that type of stuff?
Yeah.
They, they do all the administration of these projects.
So we do get, we do get some from Carroll?
Yes, we get in-kind services from them, and it's hugely helpful.
Thanks, Monica. Tom?
Over the last month, I've worked on Dorsey Town Annexation and worked on Dorsey Town Annexation, et cetera. Grass clippings, yard waste ordinance that was introduced tonight, revisions to the provisional ballot ordinance that passed tonight, the Brittany Manor Public Works Agreement, attended the follow-up signs ordinance workshop, as well as the Planning Commission meeting, which included the rezoning request that Bob mentioned, and that's it.
Okay.
Countless emails throughout.
Yeah. I'm going to amend the agenda and add to it at this point, a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing personnel issues. We will not be having a closed meeting on the Rails to Trails Plomary parking lot issue, as it was stated previously. I understand there's nothing on that. But I will move. We go into a closed session for the purpose of discussing personnel issues. Halt, aye. Hush hour?
Aye.
Patty?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jason? And I'm an aye, and we will adjourn when we're done with the meeting, so. All right, so we're going into closed session.